Pastor Randall Crindall, Riley Crindall, please. Gulf Shore Church, where is Gulf Shore Church?
It's in the old tax building.
Okay, thank you.
Let's pray. Lord, we just come together this morning with a heart of thanks. And even with the hassles, we thank you for the rain. We thank you for this beautiful place that you've given us to live. And Lord, thank you for the opportunity that we have to come together in freedom like this, to meet and to discuss the things that need to be done. So Lord, I ask you to guide and direct and give wisdom and understanding to those who you've put in charge of directing this city. Lord bless them and keep them. And I thank you, Lord, that as they discuss the things that guide us today, that you will in fact, give them your wisdom, your direction, and your peace. For Lord, we just do all that we do to praise you and to thank you for everything that we have. And we'll give all this to you in the name of Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Amy Caramba, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pleasure. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba, here. Councilman Purdon, here. Councilwoman Carr, here. Mayor Steinmeier, here. Councilman Corey, here. Councilman Gibson, here. Councilman Forbes, here.
Okay, approval of the agenda. We moved it around. Can you hear me?
Mr. Mayor, if you could bring your... Yeah.
Yes, we moved the agenda around a little bit. Out of consideration for the local people, we moved up 12A to after public comments.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, could I also request that item 12B be moved to after item 16 on the agenda?
Yes, sir. That's also... And we added a 10A and B, been reversed. We'll have to work through this. Is that okay with the City Council that we move this, change the agenda a little bit?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need a vote?
No. It looks like everyone's in favor.
Okay, so mayors welcome. Thank you for showing up in a rainy day in Bonita. Maybe rainy season started early, but we needed the rain. At this time, I'd like to have public comment on anything except 8A, which is a zoning public hearing. So anybody like to come forward to the microphone and give us your information because we need your help. We work for you. I'm John Strader.
Clarification, is this regarding the DRGR now or later?
No. The item with respect to the DRGR, for anyone who's here for that, that item will come up next after the letter of intent from NOAA properties. That will be a public hearing. We would ask that you hold your comments to that time. If you're here to speak on anything else on the agenda, now is the time to speak.
What about the Bamboo Village property?
Bamboo Village, now would be the time.
That's what we're talking about. You can talk about that now, please.
Well, good morning there, Council. Charlie Strader, Bonita Springs. And I think Mother Nature is kind of giving us a here's your sign moment this morning with the heavy rain and stormwater running, flooding our roads with both of the issues at hand. Just briefly on bamboo, as you know, I can go on and on, but I shan't today. I trust that you'll politely decline the inadequate offer. The price is way too low. They can tie it up for $25,000. The design makes most of the property private. It leaves little to no public use for parking or river access. We don't need private residence there. We need attractions and uses that complement the gardens and the park. Same old stuff. It's not innovative and it will not create a destination or anchor.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Barbara Ogle, and I am going to speak... Sorry, these masks stuck in my earring. I'm speaking in behalf of the members of the Bonita Citizens Group, and we believe the unsolicited bid for the Bamboo Village property is not something the city should actively pursue. Everyone that we have talked to within our neighborhoods and the surrounding neighborhoods agree that the worst possible use of that property is for condos or apartments. In addition, I agree with Charlie that the offer of $1 million is way below the true value, and the public has not had time to give their ideas for what would be the greatest benefit for all of the residents of Bonita Springs. As had been stated by council members, we only get one chance to do this right. The Bamboo Village property is too valuable for the future of downtown Bonita to just be used for residential development. What is the hurry? Why don't you wait until the food truck park goes in to see how the downtown can develop for use of all citizens of Bonita? As Bonita continues to grow, please consider the importance of a true downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Here we go.
Good morning. For the record, Dwight Estman, Paradise Road area. As far as the Bamboo Village property, the BVP, as I call it, it does not enhance the quality of life for people. It may be a great deal for the developer, but it's a bad deal for the city. No one I've spoken to thinks condos or apartments are the right use of that land. It would be great if the public really wants to keep that land as a park and for parking. But if they really want to see something that will enliven downtown, my wife and I have a suggestion. Imagine in a couple of years that we can book a room at the Collier Hotel or perhaps the Hoffman Inn. It's on the river downtown, and we book it for the Fourth of July. We check in about 3:00 PM and maybe we play a round of mini golf or go for a swim or maybe take a narrated boat tour down the river. Early evening, we walk across the bridge. Maybe we ride the carousel with a Ferris wheel. Then we have dinner at the restaurant that overlooks the river. Then we go back to the hotel, go up to the rooftop Sunset Bar and watch the fireworks. You can make that happen, and if you do, downtown Bonita will come alive and be a magnet for visitors and residents. This idea has three objectives. Create a public use area of the BVP that becomes a destination that benefits everyone. Create enough parking for normal needs and special events, and create buildings that have an old Florida look, like they might have been on the property for 50 or 100 years. They don't have to all be the same style or from the same period. You can think about the Shangri-La Resort, the Lyles Hotel, and the New Library as perhaps examples. Our vision creates five separate sections of the BVP, a north section and four sections on the south side of the river. South side's two and a half acres. The city retains ownership of most of that land. There's a promenade with a walkway along the river in the FEMA floodway. There's dining, one or two local restaurants, locally owned restaurants, and that land can be sold or leased. There's parking on a gravel parking lot with designated slots, and the city can use the proceeds from the money they get for the north parcel to pay to do the parking. With angled parking and one-way lanes, I estimate you can park 150 cars, and there is additional parking available on the retention area just to the east of that area that could park perhaps 100 cars. Then there needs to be an entertainment area. A small amusement park, like I mentioned, could be a short or long-term lease to a company that does county fairs. A pavilion with an enclosed stage or with lighting and sound can be rented by groups for meetings, performances, presentations, weddings. This might be better on the Banyan Tree Lot. And then maybe a museum or a theater that will draw people downtown. The north side's about two and a half acres. The city should ask for a minimum of $2.5 million for that land. But it could be traded for other land, like maybe what Baron Collier owns up here with the golf course, or a payment could be delayed, or it could be offered as a long-term land lease. So why is a hotel with a rooftop Sunset Bar for guests and the public the right development on the north side? I'll send you an email for that, so I don't want to take up any more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwight.
Hey, John.
Mayor, Council, good to see you all. My name is John Pano. I'm with CGT Kayaks, and I'm a local resident. Over the past years, I've had the opportunity to work with many of the downtown business owners, residents, and nonprofits. We have such a rich and historic history downtown, it's just amazing. Our history dates back to 1513. It's amazing that we can talk about when Ponce de Leon came. And here in Bonita Springs, we are so fortunate to own downtown property like the Wonder Gardens, Riverside Park, and the other assorted properties connected to that, and the Bamboo property. And I want to paint a little picture for you. In 1960-something, you couldn't go down that street without seeing an attraction every 100 feet or so, and there were people all over the place. And we're starting to get a resurgence of that again. The Wonder Gardens is drawing big crowds, and the parking lots filling. Riverside Park and the kayak shop and the artist cabins, again, were drawing thousands every year. The events downtown, tens of thousands are drawn to downtown. Some things that I know that we've talked about that's so needed downtown is development of the Bamboo property of some kind. Parking issues, we need to have parking for downtown for these events to draw these visitors. One of the things I always hear from people, and I hear from a lot of them, is there's no place to stay downtown except for the ranch. That's the only one. When that fills up, there's no place to stay. So it seems to me if you had a hotel on the Wonder Gardens or on the Bamboo property, you would cut down on the amount of traffic coming from other hotels to visit us. We get people coming from Fort Myers, from Fort Myers Beach, from Naples, from Marco. They're traveling all over from their hotels to come downtown, and they would like to spend more than just a few hours. We have so much to offer. I think we really need to focus on development of that area and make it easier to develop there than develop other properties that are more eco-sensitive and front-sensitive. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Hey, Dave. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Council. For the record, my name is David Webb. I am president and CEO of the Wonder Gardens. And I'm here to speak on behalf of our Board of Directors, our staff, our volunteers, and our 980 active members. I would like to speak about the Bamboo Village property. As many of you know, I've had conversations with a number of you recently. The Wonder Gardens attendance has been up since we reopened after closing due to COVID. We're up 28%, and we've had record-breaking month after month of attendance. Our staff go over across the street now and pick up trash in that lot because it is an overflow parking area for our visitors. We have 75,000 visitors every year at the Wonder Gardens. This is the basis of the downtown Bonita Springs economy. I'm a member of the Downtown Business Alliance, and all of my discussions with downtown businesses here in Bonita Springs circle around the impact of the Wonder Gardens on all of those local businesses, restaurants, shops, beauty parlors. People come here and bring their family. There is an accepted formula for tourist attractions like the Wonder Gardens. That formula is about $175 per person that is spent. Now, the Wonder Gardens, you know, to be realistic, the Wonder Gardens is just part of that equation. But if you look at, if we have 75,000 guests per year, and 50% of those guests stick around... So most of our guests come in the morning. They stick around and go and buy lunch afterward. Say they spend $14 per person on lunch. That's over half a million dollar impact on downtown Bonita Springs economy. And the reason I mention this is because if we lose the parking for our overflow guests on those really busy months that we just saw, many of you saw a lot of our guests parked over there in the last several months. But if we lose that parking, that is going to be a direct impact on our capacity. If we limit our capacity at the Wonder Gardens, and not even to mention all the overflow parking on the south side of the property for restaurants and shops and events that take place downtown. If we limit that capacity, then we limit our ability to contribute to the economy of downtown Bonita Springs. That will have a trickle effect that will be a detriment to all of the downtown businesses. So I asked on behalf of all the people aforementioned that you please do not accept this offer to develop that property. We would like time for more questions and comments to be explored from the public. And I will, I'll go ahead and go through a few of those questions that should be considered. I would recommend that we do a feasibility study for the economic impact of having parking on that lot, be it the north side or the south side of the park. I would not recommend turning the whole thing into a parking lot. I think that would be horrible and not a good use of the property. We're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on beautifying the Wonder Gardens property, including the recent permits we've received to redo the signs in the front, working with people to beautify the street front of our property. And it would really be a detriment to turn that into a big parking lot across the street. So the mixed use of that, I think, is up to Council and Mayor to decide, but I would highly recommend that we consider the following questions. What is the economic impact of that property to the downtown businesses in terms of using it as overflow parking for the businesses, for the Wonder Gardens, to accommodate that large number of guests which we expect to grow? What is the current capacity? How is it being used currently? How many people currently use it? What are the trends in usage? If something has worked out with that property, could there be an off-season use for it if we're using it primarily for parking? And also times of day, most of our guests at the Wonder Gardens come in the morning. Do we expect it to increase as business traffic to downtown increases? I would hope you all would hope that would be a yes answer. How does parking on the lot benefit the local economy? That should really be answered. That's something we can't just guess about. Would economic growth be hindered by the loss of that parking area and limiting capacity? And what would the economic impact be if that capacity was limited? If the parking was available for local businesses and if that was then taken away? So a direct correlation to that question could be if we limit the 175,000 guests that come to the Wonder Gardens and then patron our local businesses, what effect will that have on those local businesses? So I thank you for your time, and I hope you have a great day.
Thank you, Dave. Nice presentation.
My name is Trish Leonard. I am a resident of Bonita Springs. I'm also the president of the Downtown Alliance, which is made up of business owners, residents in the area. I'm here just to speak briefly on the property that is across the street from the Wonder Gardens. I agree that it is underpriced as well as not good use for what is proposed in the letter that was sent to the city. In addition, I do, would like to invite all of you to our Downtown Alliance meetings. I know most of you have attended the meetings on the Fourth Tuesday of the month. That's where I hear a lot of our merchants talk about what's going on downtown. Parking definitely is an issue, especially when you have the National Art Shows, you have the Blues Fest, you have even the band concerts that come to our park. So I'd really would hope that you would consider. We waited 18 years, and I don't think one letter should make a difference so quickly in your decision of what you plan to do. Our next guest speaker at the Downtown Alliance will be Janet Washburn. She is our first female fire marshal for the City of Bonita Springs, so I'd encourage you all to come and attend, and thank you.
Thank you, Trish.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Having set up there, I want to congratulate you all for what you've done to adapt during the pandemic. It's been very difficult, and I think you've done a marvelous job making the change so that you can still conduct the city's, the public's business. You add the problems we've had with City Hall on top of that, and I just think you've done a yeoman's job in working for the public. However, and you notice there's always a however in there, I think one of the major issues before you now is the purchase or the sale of the Bamboo property. When it was purchased in 2003 at an arm's-length transaction, the city planned on selling it to kickstart the Old 41 redevelopment, using funding that would allow it to be resold. At my suggestion to City Council, they used funds that would allow it to be resold. It was not condemned. It was an arm's-length transaction. In hindsight, it was a real blessing that the Antaramian project fell through. If that project had gone in, it would have been a disaster, and downtown would be much different than it is now. Old 41 has developed on its own, in part because the city removed the 200 trailers and motel units on that property that were a drag to the local economy right across the street. The sheriff's office could have stationed officers there every night for the whole time that it was in operation, or at least I was involved. Any incentives that you provide should be evaluated against today's conditions, not what they were in 2003. Old 41, maybe because I live within a half a mile, has done a lot of redevelopment. I made a short list, if you'll give me an opportunity. There were no special events that required parking. You have in fact, set up a situation where you're benefiting the nonprofits to conduct their business and give people in your community added services that might have to be otherwise provided by the city. Wonderful job. The Wayside Hotel on northwest corner of Old 41 and Ragsdale was seriously rundown and has since been removed and is a vacant lot ready for development. While not facing Old 41, there was a rundown migrant farmhouse on Wilson and Phelps that the county had continuously overlooked for years, and this code enforcement finally got on them, and they decided the house was not worth rebuilding. That currently is the site for the retention area that was mentioned earlier as potential Survey Cafe was one of two dilapidated houses. Lyles Hotel, known as Palm River, was surrounded by 200 trailers and cottages that led all the way from the river to the Banshell. The Banshell site was in fact, a softball diamond that was not large enough. They used to frequently hit softballs out into the Old 41 traffic. There was an old six-foot-high, five-foot-high structure on the west side backed up to the railroad track that was so termite-eating it was unsafe to climb on. The library site was an old, very small church with two to three old houses. Incidentally, if you really want to do something to develop downtown in the evening, get the county to open that library at night. Many cities have redeveloped their downtowns by putting libraries there. You have one, but it's not open. Now, I know the pandemic has caused some problems, but I urge you to contact the county and see what they can do about extending the hours and providing venues for the public to meet in those rooms that are built there in the library. The community center now gone was a 60-year-old building that met no current standards. The fishing tackle shop and Savannah Beauty Shop did not exist. The Lemon Tree Restaurant was slated to be a medical office, but the doctor couldn't make the timing work. He wanted to work out of there and tear it down and rebuild at the same time. So when it became available, the city bought it. The garage on the southeast corner of Reynolds and Old 41 was still operating with a junkyard in the back full of junk cars. The owner called it a Volkswagen museum, and many of those junk cars were parked along the fence on the west side of Old 41 in front of the junkyard. Integrity Church Building was seriously rundown. The Quinns came in and did a major upgrade of that and really have improved that situation. Many of you may not realize that Pennsylvania Avenue turned to the north at the railroad tracks and joined Old 41 at Reynolds Street. One of the first projects we did was to realign that so that it would connect with Ragsdale, so you would have a straight shot east to west from Arroyo to Matheson. The Veterans, Veterinarians Office, who's a very nice guy, incidentally. Pottery's Art and Longitude Site were a paver storage operating area. The hot dog stand was an LP sales and refill area with all of the usual tanks, LP supplies, and that kind of paraphernalia. Down Town Coffee was a corner store, and the Sprint Lot immediately to the south was still being used for its cars and trucks' storage during the night. The outdoor kitchen shop was a house, I think. I don't remember what happened there, but I think that was an old house. Dixie Moon on Dean Street, we're all familiar with that, was a dangerous condition, even though it had the best fried chicken I'd ever eaten, with 200 trailers in the back of that that were in a dilapidated condition. The problem is that trailers depreciate so quickly that they end up being the largest undeveloped sites in many communities, and this is happening all over the country, where the largest still available, still available, developable site is a trailer park. Now it's mosaic, which is not anywhere near full occupancy, incidentally. Sangalaw Springs was not in the best condition. There was a small 10-by-10 building used formerly by the Chamber of Commerce right where the rotary clock is now. And the rotary clock has been put in by the Rotary Club. Everglades Wonder Garden was past its prime and received nowhere close to the visitors it now has. In fact, I used to get a lot of complaints because the conditions at which those animals were kept no longer met the current standards for keeping wild animals, and they didn't have habitats like they do most places now. They had cages. It was freaking awful. If the wind was from the west, you could smell it all the way out to Old 41. The bridge over the Imperial River and Oak Creek provided no views of either the creek or the river. You have since corrected that. The dog park, quarter mile to the east on East Terry, also had 200 trailers that had been removed, and it's now the dog truck. When that parcel became available, we had an opportunity to buy it, and we worked with the owner, and we bought that property. And it sat there vacant for a number of years until Council finally decided that a dog park was a good use for that. If you go out there, probably this afternoon, as soon as it quits raining, there'll be wall-to-wall parking this time of year for people taking their dogs out there. All of that adds to the quality of life in your community. I think there was an old open farm stand on the Levin Lot, which you've since acquired. There were no sidewalks on Pennsylvania, Ragsdale, East Terry, or other city streets. I remember one resident that was a little bit negative towards the city came up to me and gave me a big hug back when you could do those kinds of things, thanking me for building the sidewalks on Ragdale. And I used to see him out there walking all the time. I haven't seen him last year, so I hope he's all right. That adds to the quality of life in your community. The Ragsdale parking lot had three old houses. The city acquired and removed the houses. The public during this time has not received sufficient opportunities to obtain information and provide input to you. I have to ask Council, what is the rush? This is probably the worst time that you could put through a project like this when the public has difficulty contacting, being here, hearing what's going on. When you had your workshop in the other room, I'm sorry to tell you, it didn't work. You couldn't hear anything if you were in the audience. I know you tried, did the best you could, but the conditions are less than adequate for a real live, honest-to-goodness, let's-get-the-information workshop. This is probably the last opportunity for Council to make even further impacts in Old Bonita. I urge thorough investigations into the potential ramifications of any actions you take with regard to that site. Someone been mentioned here this morning, and I hope you will consider the discussions that have been before you. Thank you very much. Allow me to speak. I know I probably exceeded my time limit, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, but I've been holding this on my chest for a long time because I live within a half a mile of Old 41, and I moved there in part because I saw the opportunities that Old 41 provided to the community. And magically, because of some things you've done, there's been a lot of things that have happened for the good on Old 41. happened for the good on Old 41. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Thank you. You're responsible for a lot of improvement in Old 41, believe me. And I thank you for your time. Anybody else? Oh, here comes Martha. All right.
Good morning, council, and I concur with everything that Gary Price said. Okay, so I'm here.
Your name, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Martha Simons for the record, and I have that for the city clerk. I will speak during the hearing, the public hearing that's coming up on 8A personally.
We'll have to wait for that. Let's be right after this, right after public comment, then we go.
Well, it's not my public comment. I want to read something into the record.
Not on 8A.
Who's speaking right now, please?
Not on 8A.
Ms. Simons, I'm sorry. Are you trying to give comments on the public hearing?
Yes, I'd like to give a comment on the public hearing, but not my public comment. Somebody else who sent me an email and want it read into the...
It would be appropriate for those comments to be read during the public hearing.
I'll do that then. So I'd just like to say ditto to what Gary said. Thank you very much, council.
Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and city council. My name is Steve Hovland. I'm a real estate developer, a local real estate developer, and we have invested a lot of money in the city of Benita Springs, and we're trying to do a good job bringing modern businesses that are seeking space to the city. And two of our projects are on Old 41, Causeway Commerce Park and Entrada on the corner of Old 41 and Benita Beach Road. We have followed closely what your staff and yourselves have learned by asking Duane Plater, Zee Burke, and some of the other consultants over the years. And we believe in that movement of what you're doing and what DPZ has suggested. And I don't disagree with a lot of the public comments as to the concerns with parking and event parking and also transient, or I should say hotel units, that kind of thing, efficiency apartments, et cetera. But there is a good use for that land, and there's what they call the highest and best use. And not too many people are qualified to say what that is, but Duane Plater, Zee Burke is. They not only reworked Naples in 2003, they've done cities all over the world and helped them, cities like yours that are in a place where they're going to grow, whether they like it or not. They just don't know exactly how. And the experts that you've already contacted are the best there are. So I suggest that you listen to the public as it relates to event parking and so on. And we would love to also be involved with more discussion with regard to our ideas. And we are open to suggestions even on our own sites. But as we finish these new buildings, you're going to see an influx of new businesses that are modern and helpful to the community. And this riverfront land, you know, I'm not going to comment what I think exactly it should be. I have a belief, I know exactly what it should be, but it's not a place to be talking about that now. I just know that there's a lot to consider, and I would like to be a part of it. And if there's anything I can do with the buildings that we have, I would be open to suggestions. I'm working closely with your staff, and we get along well. And I just want to have an opportunity to be involved in any way that we can, including investing. So thank you for listening and have a great day and good luck with this.
Thank you, sir. Do we have some more public comments? Seeing none. Here we are here. I suppose we move on to 8A now, which is a public hearing. City attorney?
Mr. Mayor, I believe you wanted to move 12A to before 8A.
Okay, yes, 12A.
Yes, and this was a letter of intent that I received for the Bamboo property from Noah Properties LLC. At this time, it's council discretion how they wish to treat this letter of intent. They are requesting to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with the city to move forward, to buy the property. They're not asking for any additional entitlements. They have set out a price that they are willing to pay, and they have given a preliminary design plan. I will turn over to the city manager because I believe, based on the council's prior discussions, she was planning on bringing some items back, and so I may make a recommendation myself that you postpone decision on this letter of intent until those items have come back to you. That way, it gives the proposer an opportunity to amend their proposal to conform with the council's wishes. But I'll turn it over to Arlene now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you recall from our last workshop, there were many ideas that were presented. We, as your staff, are putting that together for you in documents, as well as we did receive from one of your council members, Councilmember Forbes, his draft vision. We also wanted to give the opportunity to any other council members who'd like to provide that back to us as well, and we are planning on bringing that format to you at our next council meeting on May 5th. So our recommendation would be that you possibly postpone this decision at this point so that you have an opportunity to review those materials.
Motion to postpone.
Any other comments? Are we in trouble if we deny this today?
No, you're not. There's no denial. You're choosing not to take action. My recommendation would be, at this point, to postpone at least the second meeting in May. That way, when you have your discussion on the items that Arlene's bringing forward to you, if that changes the intent of the council, that gives the opportunity of this proposer to change their terms.
Okay, well, I hear a lot of public saying they don't want this proposal that's on the table here.
Well, it would also give the public two more meetings at which to provide their own input.
Okay, what is the motion again now? The second?
There's a motion, a second to postpone.
That way, there can be more input on this. We can get other offers and, you know, see what else.
Any other comments about?
It could potentially open up other offers, so to me, I think it could potentially open up other offers. So, I mean, we're not agreeing to anything. You know, we're not in a hurry on it. So if we postpone it, then we get back all the stuff that Derek put together for us, we can say, hey, these are the things we want, here's where you guys are at, and if they're nowhere near, they go home packing. But that gives other people the opportunity to also submit. So it's a non-committal way to keep moving, but not, you know, close doors to other people.
Okay, Amy?
I'm fully in agreement with postponing it, but I do want to emphasize a point that I've made at least three times before, that we need to have a robust process by which we analyze any proposals that come forward, including encouraging people to come forward around the same time so we can analyze one concept versus another. But I think where the council needs to do more work is to clarify the major vision points that we're looking for. So when somebody comes forward, they try to accommodate that vision that reflects the will of the city. As so many speakers have mentioned today, it's obvious to me that there's a hunger from our citizens to come out here and tell us what they think they want there. We haven't finished our job. So I'm very much in favor of postponing it, along with asking staff to come back with some suggestions for a process of how we could proceed and do this in the way that we should.
Thank you, Amy.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? Just so the public is aware, this isn't something that we as a city solicited. This isn't something that we're in a hurry to do. This isn't something that we reached out to them and asked them to do it. The reality is that it is a property that we own that, just like any property that you own, people have the opportunity to give us offers. So we can't say we're not going to accept offers. If they would have offered us $20 million, I think we're having a different discussion. So again, it's not procedurally that we're out of order. It's not procedurally that we as a council are doing anything. I just want everybody to fully understand the dynamics of this. We own the property. Somebody came to us and made us an offer for the property. So now we opened it up to you, to share it with you, so you can see what we received. That's it. That's what this is. This isn't accepting anything, and there's no predetermined thought process in regards to any favoritism towards this plan or accepting this plan or anything along those lines. This is, we received this, you as the public deserve to know we saw this, because that's how the real estate market works, and it's fair and an open process. So I just wanted to clear up any misconceptions that somehow we were procedurally out of order, we were procedurally, we were looking for anything, or we were somehow the catalyst for us getting an offer. Somebody thinks we're a great place to develop. To me, that's a good thing to hear because that means there's other people who might think that way. But it's not something that we as a city are out looking to do. So we can all just calm down a little bit.
Okay, well, taxpayers paid for it, and the taxpayers ought to have a say in what we do with it. So I agree. We call for a vote?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay. Well, now we move on to 8A. City attorney, please?
Yes, this is a public hearing to consider the transmittal to DEO, an Imperial District future land use category, and amend the city's future land use map for approximately 328 plus or minus acres of land in the city of Benita Springs' density reduction groundwater resource district to an Imperial District as depicted in the proposals before you. Mike Fegan will give a brief introduction, then the applicant will speak, and then we will have staff presentation and any rebuttals before we open up to the public comment. Based on the length of time that this application went to at the local planning agency, I would recommend after the applicant's presentation that you take a short break because it might be a long one.
Thank you. I agree. Let's go.
Good morning, council. Mike Fegan with Community Development for the record. Just to summarize the request, and then I'll introduce the applicant. You do have essentially two requests before you today. The first one is to create a new future land use category called the Imperial District and establish text to help regulate that district within the comprehensive plan. The second prong of the request is to essentially take 328 acres out of the DRGR and classify it into this new Imperial District future land use category. Some of the language that you'll be reviewing includes up to 700 dwelling units and just under 55,000 square feet of commercial uses. This was heard by the LPA back on March 25th. They did vote in favor of these two changes by a vote of four to one. Staff does have concerns with this request. The concerns are outlined in the staff report. A lot of it goes back to the change being relatively so significant going from DRGR to this that it seems appropriate to possibly have additional policy discussions that either reaffirm the existing DRGR policies or potentially make a change. But until that direction is given, staff just couldn't see supporting this particular application. But again, the LPA did support it by a vote of four to one. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the applicant and the applicant's team.
And council, one more request, and I'm assuming I don't see any objection from the applicant, but the applicant has brought a court reporter. And because of the length of the hearing and the bad acoustics in here, I would ask that the council please refrain from interrupting or asking any questions. Possibly my request to the end of all the presentations in public hearing, just so that it's easier for the court reporter to establish their record. And also, if you have any questions on the application itself, Land Use Council David Theriak is here as well.
Derek, just procedurally, as far as the court reporter goes, is this a standard practice? I don't recall seeing it, and I'm just curious what that's about.
If the applicant's right, if there is a taking on appeal, a verbatim transcript should be required, and because they are trying to establish a record, it is in everyone's best interest that that record is easily heard by the court reporter, and that's why I'm making the request.
Interesting. Okay.
Good morning. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Brian Farrar with BCF Management Group. I'm here today to represent Three Hard-Working Americans LLC, a Benita Springs family-owned company started by Tamara and Dennis Swan and their son Tyler. Dennis and Tamara have lived and worked here in Benita Springs for over 30 years, and this project is their vision to create a family-centered community to support the growing population of Benita Springs. Thoughtful of the changing times they live in, they want to create a community that is interconnected with the environment, is sustainable, and pandemic resilient. They have been thoughtful in providing many of the features presented today and believe that this project should move forward. With that in mind, I'm going to invite my entitlement team to present the Swan's vision for the future in the Imperial District of Benita Springs. Thank you. Sarah?
Sarah Spector with Retzold and Andrus. And as Brian mentioned, we are here on behalf of Dennis and Tamara Swan, both individually and as the sole members of Three HWA Land Holdings LLC. The property that we are discussing today, and I apologize, I didn't realize we had a PowerPoint presentation. And before we get into the presentation, I just wanted to introduce you. As Brian mentioned, we do have an entitlement team with us today. We do have the Swans here, and you've already heard from Brian. We also have planners and engineers from RWA. We have individuals from Water Science Consultants, Passerell and Associates, and TR Transportation will be participating remotely. All right, as I mentioned, the property that we are discussing today is a 328-acre parcel of land. I'm going to skip ahead for one second just so I think most of you are familiar with where this is located, but I just wanted to provide you with an overview before telling you too much about it. And I don't, does this have a... Yes. All right. So we have the subject property highlighted in yellow. This is the property that the Swans own individually and through the LLC. To the west here, you have Citrus Park. To the north is, right here is Bellevilla. You have the Benita Grand Mine property to the east. This is where there will be a public park you'll hear us talk about in a short while, and also the Larry Keiker Preserve, which you'll hear us refer to. So this is, just for another reference point, this is at the intersection of Benita Grand and Citrus Park Boulevard. All right, so going back, it has been a long time since this property has been what you would consider pristine or beneficial to surrounding properties or to the community as a whole. There are no unique upland habitats, and it's historically been used for agricultural purposes with the Swans still raising cattle there today. Additionally, the property is part of the bermed and dyked water management system that also serves the Citrus Park and Bellevilla communities. Stormwater is not specifically treated before it exits the property via sheet flow. As Mr. Fegan had mentioned, we do have two requests before you today, and we do have an additional request that will be considered in the future. Today, we are asking that you consider transmitting an amendment to the future land use element of the Benita Plan to allow for creation of the Imperial District, together with a future land use map amendment to change the designation of this specific property to the Imperial District. The Imperial District, as proposed, will reintroduce environmental benefits to this property by enhancing water resource qualities and restoring native habitat. Once the comprehensive plan amendment is approved, we will come back before you with our second request to rezone the property from AG2 and MH2 to mixed-use plan development to allow for the development of 700 residential units and 55,000 square feet of neighborhood commercial to serve not only this community, but the surrounding communities that already exist today. The project provides a number of benefits to... The project provides a number of benefits to the community as a whole. First, I would like to cover some general benefits that the project provides. It creates a step-down transition in density from Citrus Park to Benita Grand Mine. It addresses population growth that cannot be wholly absorbed within the downtown development district. It addresses the city council's strategic priority that's been previously identified regarding environmental protection. It restores all onsite wetlands and creates a 20-acre drainage conveyance that also serves as wading bird habitat, which will also provide a benefit to the community as a whole with respect to drainage. It provides an extensive system of lakes for onsite storage and treatment that is not currently provided. And it decreases discharge by 79% from the northern discharge point and by 85% at the southern discharge point. There will be two discharge points from the property. It also decreases the withdrawal of water by 70% over historic use. It replaces wells and septic with public utilities and introduces neighborhood commercial, as I mentioned, to create, to capture the internal traffic and also provide services to surrounding communities. Finally, it provides an extensive system of onsite pedestrian facilities and will connect to the Larry Keiker Preserve and the public park to the east. In addition to general benefits, there are a number of economic benefits, many of which will be addressed during the rezoning phase in the future, including increasing your tax base. But one important economic benefit that we wanted to highlight today is the amount of impact fees that will be generated by this project. Even with a 10% reduction that's currently in place through November of this year, this project will generate over $11 million in impact fees. If the 10% discount is not continued forward, it will then generate over $12 million in impact fees. Seven million, almost eight million of which deals solely with transportation, which you'll hear from Ted Trish about in a short, short time. Finally, as Mr. Fegan also mentioned, we did have a recommendation of approval from the LPA. The recommendation was four to one to transmit this to the state. The staff report that we had reviewed in advance of the LPA did not contain any recommendation. It solely provided that this was a policy decision for the city council. It wasn't until the summary was provided last week that we noted that there was a recommendation of denial. So with that, I want to pass this off to our team, starting with Patrick Van Ness, to demonstrate why this project should be approved.
My name is Patrick Van Ness. I'm a land use planner with RWA. It's a pleasure to be here today to talk about the Imperial District Comprehensive Plan Amendment before you. Before I get started, I just ask you to bear with me, I have quite a few slides. Frankly, we were hoping for a more favorable staff report, but we respectfully agree to disagree with your staff on certain points. And I'll walk through some of those items and discuss those in further detail. So please give me a little time to get through that and address that and hopefully when we complete our presentation, you kind of see our viewpoint and agree with us. So some of the things I'll touch upon today, I'll look at land use and issues related to land use, so the history of the DRGR, compatibility issues, density, benefits from the proposed Imperial District. I'll talk about the proposed language for the Imperial District. And then I'll wrap things up by looking at the proposed plan development. We have submitted a concurrent zoning application because we want to be fully transparent and we want you to know and see what is being proposed for this district. So all these items that I just mentioned about, that I just talked about, I think can be summarized in two big questions. And I'll go to the PowerPoint right now. So the first question is, is this an appropriate area for future development in the city of Benita Springs? The second question is, is the proposed project and the type of development consistent with what is envisioned for Benita Springs in this area? Is it a quality development that will protect the environment and a development that we can be proud of? And on those two questions, we believe the answer is definitely yes, and we'll go through why we believe so and hopefully you can agree with us. So just to summarize, we are asking for a Comprehensive Plan Amendment that would change the future land use category from DRGR to Imperial District. We spent a lot of time developing the language for the Imperial District. We fully believe that environmental safeguards and development can be compatible. They are not mutually exclusive. Development done the right way can protect the environment and can also improve water conditions in the DRGR. So the project before you today and the Complan Amendment would allow for an eventual community called the Safira Community, and it would allow for 700 dwelling units, 55,000 square feet of neighborhood commercial to serve that community, serve surrounding communities. And also, the idea is to provide a neighborhood commercial that will eliminate trips on Benita Beach Road. So if you have to go get a loaf of bread or milk, or you need to get a haircut, you have a small commercial center that is human scale, that is the right scale for that community and the surrounding neighborhoods to provide those immediate needs. So in talking about protecting and putting some safeguards into place, what do we mean by that? Well, we have included numerous stringent environmental conditions within the Imperial District, including the requirement for an enhanced lake management plan, a hydrological restoration plan, and an indigenous management plan. A lot of things fall under that, but some of the highlights are a requirement for a minimum of 60% open space, a requirement for enhanced water quality treatment, the implementation of best management practices when it comes to engineering design and water management practices onsite, the requirement for Florida-friendly landscaping, and as mentioned by Sarah, the inclusion of a 20-acre drainage conveyance filter marsh, which will provide water quality, water quantity benefits. It will provide wading bird habitat. It will be a great, also amenity for the residents of this community. And is one of the pieces of the puzzle in improving water conditions in the DRGR. We understand that we are one piece of that entire puzzle, but we are right in the middle of the DRGR. And this conveyance can provide hydrological connection from a north-south perspective and can connect to other improvements that are going to occur in the future with Benita Grand Mine and some improvements to the west of this project. So in summary, the project and the requirements will eliminate agricultural uses and some of the negative impacts associated with agri- uses. It will improve those water resources and will provide a quality environment and a quality residential community for the residents of Benita Springs. So before I go into the detail of the district, I'd like to provide a little historical context and look at the conditions on the ground in the DRGR. I believe that, I think the public's perception has changed quite a bit in the last 10 to 20 years. However, I think a lot of people in the public still believe that the DRGR is somehow a pristine environment that we need to put in conservation. And, you know, unfortunately, that is not factually true. So we'll talk about that. The DRGR Future Land Use category that is in place, we believe was a placeholder and inherited by Lee County. We believe that the uses on the ground are inconsistent with the regulations of the DRGR. We believe that the majority of the DRGR is impacted by development. And we recognize that the city, the city's charter committee, when the city was formed, recognized that. They recognized that the land, that the uses on the ground were inconsistent with the future land use language and they mandated that the area be studied and they mandated that the Comprehensive Plan be amended after those studies. So in looking at this aerial, we can see the DRGR and if we focus on the northeastern quadrant, which is where our property is, it's highlighted in yellow, it's right in the center of this slide, it's surrounded by uses that have severely impacted the area. We've got mining, we have agriculture, we have some residential development, we have the Citrus Park, we have some multifamily in there, we have public facility uses and we have public utilities and roads going throughout the area. According to your last land use study that was conducted, the Baraco Report, also, I think the official name was, the Northeastern Quadrant Study, 71% of this area is impacted by development. The study also found that 35% of the existing uses on the ground today are inconsistent with the future land use category and the language in that category, meaning the uses and the densities and intensities that are found in that DRGR category. So looking a little closer at pictures from the ground, these are pictures of the subject property. As you can see, it is devoid of any sensitive habitat. This property has been used for agriculture for many, many years. It is currently used for grazing and as you can see, it is pasture. It is not environmentally sensitive land. These are pictures of other areas within the DRGR. We have pictures of Citrus Park. We see the residential component there. We see some of their amenities. We also have a picture of public facilities, the BSU facility, and some of the utilities running through the DRGR. Next slide shows pictures of some multifamily that currently exists also in that area. Next slide shows kind of a historical areas of how that area significantly changed through the years. So if we go back to 1950, which is the first aerial on your left, we can see that at that time, the DRGR was indeed pristine. It was untouched, undeveloped. The next slide, the next aerial in the middle is an aerial of 1970. And as you can see, in the late 60s, early 70s, agricultural improvements occurred and the area was used for row crops and citrus. And that's when improvements came in with berming and dyking, redirecting water. And then moving on to the 1990 picture, we can see that in the 70s, 80s, residential development occurred. We have Citrus Park, we have Bellevilla on that slide, and we also see Benita Grand Mine where the mine was fully in operation in the 80s and 90s. So how did we wind up with this DRGR category, which is inconsistent with what's on the ground? Well, prior to this category being imposed on this area of Benita Springs, the area was under the fringe category. The fringe category allowed for up to 10 dwelling units per acre. Right now, the DRGR category allows one dwelling per 10 acres. So that's a very significant decrease in density and, for lack of a better word, a downzoning in what was previous allowed. And what happened there is Benita Springs was part of Lee County. In 1990, the Department of Community Affairs issued a non-compliance order to Lee County. And basically, that non-compliance order said, "Lee County, you have way too much density on your future land use map. You need to reduce that overall county-wide density." So in order to comply with DCA, what the county did is it looked at lands that were mostly undeveloped, where there was no public infrastructure, and those were lands to the east of the county, and they assigned this label of Density Reduction, Groundwater Resource. Density Reduction because that was the goal of creating this category and complying with DCA at the time, and Groundwater Resource because that's where the county was obtaining potable water for the county. And that's still where we obtained the potable water for Lee County. So moving forward a little bit to 1999, the city of Benita Springs was incorporated and was formed. The city had very little time to create its own complan. So what the city did is it adopted the Lee County plan as their own plan with the intent of updating that, revising it, and creating its own plan. And that's what's occurred. There's been numerous changes to that plan and we truly have a city of Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan. However, the DRGR category remains the same. It has not changed. So as you can see, it's a carryover from Lee County. And the charter committee, the city founders, understood that. They put in some policies in the complan stating that the area had to be studied and that new regulations had to be applied to that area. So what we have here on this slide is Future Land Use Element Policy 1.71 and CCME, which stands for Coastal and Conservation Element Policy 16.4.1. And both of those policies have almost the same verbiage, just slightly different. But basically, they mandate that the city study the DRGR. And what I have in quotes here, and it's taken directly from the complan, "The study is to identify the types and intensity of uses that should be allowed and to determine the most effective and appropriate techniques to ensure the maintenance of adequate quantity and quality of surface and groundwater resources." Furthermore, they added policies saying that once the study was done, then there should be complan amendments that follow to amend the DRGR policy. Those are found in Future Land Use Element Policy 1.7.2 and CCME Policy 16.4.2. And it reads as follows, "Upon completion of this study referred to in Policy 1.7.1 and also 16.3.1, the city shall prepare an amendment to its Comprehensive Plan identifying the land uses considered most appropriate in the DRGR and the resource protection measures needed for that area." So there have been numerous studies following the incorporation. What's interesting is that all those studies recommended higher densities than one dwelling unit per 10 acre, or they acknowledged that higher densities could be accommodated through best practices measures. And some of the more notable studies were the Rawl, Larue, Deleese, and Baraco studies. And those provided recommendations for density ranges from two dwelling units per acre all the way up to 10 dwelling units per acre. What we are proposing as part of the Imperial District is a density of 2.1 dwelling units per acre, which is at the very low range of those recommendations. Also, all those studies did include recommendations for best management practices, for surface water restoration initiatives, for filter marshes, flowways, public infrastructure, and water resource projects. And we took this to heart and we've included provisions and requirements and measures in the Imperial District to incorporate those best management practices and those safeguards and protections. So moving forward to 2013, I think the public perception was indeed changing and that people recognized that the DRGR is not a pristine environment. people recognized that the DRGR is not a pristine environment that can be put under conservation. And at that time, previous city council established a moratorium and established a citizens' water task force to study water issues. So I think that the pendulum swung a little bit, where recognition was, yes, we have some impact to the DRGR, let's make sure that when we do allow development, it'll be done the right way, and that we can protect and safeguard our water resources. So through an entire year, the water task force met on a regular basis, studied environmental water resource issues, and that culminated with a white paper that provided 34 recommendations to city council. Twenty-nine of those 34 recommendations were approved by council, and they contain recommendations associated with water quantity, water quality, water supply, policies that could be incorporated into the comp plan, land development code changes, and also agency coordination recommendations. Subsequent to that study, Benita Grand Mine came forward, and their petition, their request was to reclaim that mine and to establish a residential community surrounding the existing pits. As you know, that was a long process. There were legal issues considered. Eventually, there was a settlement that happened, and there was a comprehensive plan amendment and plan development approval for this project. But what that does is it does set a precedent, it does recognize that development can occur in the DRGR, but that it has to occur in the correct form, and it has to be done the correct way. And the conservation fringe that was created is performance-based, meaning that you need to meet many requirements to be allowed to develop in the DRGR. We are asking for the same type of performance-based future land use category, where we have to respect many regulations, have many safeguards in place, and have criteria which is above and beyond the regular land development code, and also exceeds water management district criteria. So the future land use category and the plan development that was established for Benita Grand Mine establishes a regulatory framework that ensures the right type of development can occur in the DRGR, and we are asking for something that's very similar. Many of the regulations in that category also apply to our category. So next slide, I'm going to talk about density in the DRGR, and what exists today, and what we are requesting. The subject property is highlighted in yellow. Due to this PowerPoint, north is actually on the left side, south on the right side. Project is 328 acres. To the west of the property, we have Belleville, we also have Citrus Park. Density at Citrus Park is 3.6 units per acre. Our proposed density is 2.1 dwelling units per acre, and the density at the mine is .52 dwelling units per acre. As Sarah mentioned, what we are proposing here is a step down in density, density gradient. That's consistent with best practices when it comes to planning. In urban planning, we talk about the urban to rural transect, where you start with an urban core, which has higher densities, higher intensities. Doesn't mean that every lot, every parcel within the core will be developed to the maximum, but generally speaking, more intense. As you go towards the outskirts of the city, you have a density gradient where that density and the intensity of development goes down, and that's what we are offering here with 3.6 at Citrus Park, us at 2.1, and then .52. And coincidentally, if you average out the density, 3.6 plus .52, and take the average of that, you're at 2.1, which is what we are requesting. The other thing I'd like to point out is, I recognize that we always calculate density on the gross acreage. However, when we compare ourselves to Benita Grand Mine, I don't know if that's really a fair comparison, because the mine has been in existence for over 30 years. It was approved as an IPD, so industrial plan development. As part of that IPD, they've mined a lot of the land. They've mined over 500 acres of that land. And also, as part of their approvals, they had to set aside lands that were environmentally sensitive and put those in conservation, and they've done so, and that's over 300 acres. So if you really look at their density from a net standpoint, the actual land they can develop, their density is approximately 1.7 dwelling units per acre. Again, very close, very consistent, very compatible with what we are requesting. So with regards to allowing density in portions of the city that are out east and that abut conservation lands, the mine and what we are requesting are not the only precedents. This has been done previously also within the city. So if you look at sections one and two, so the lands and the projects at the very end of Benita Beach Road, that's where Benita National is, Benina Landing, Valencia Benita, and the Seasons Project. Those two sections of land, a new future land use category was created for those. Again, it was a performance future land use category where many requirements had to be met in order to develop in those areas. The proper safeguards were put in place. Those two sections of land are completely surrounded by conservation lands, and as we know today, those are state-of-the-art communities with brand-new infrastructure. They are loved communities. Residents that live there are very proud of and enjoy their communities. And also, with regards to water issues, those communities fared very well during Irma. The construction standards and the permitting standards needed today are much more stringent than they were for many older parts of Benita, and we see that, and we've seen that going through the storm, going through Irma, and these same standards and heightened standards would apply for any project that we do within the Imperial District. So from the standpoint of precedence, I think we've addressed that, and the uses on the ground, but also from a need standpoint, Benita Springs is a very attractive community. Population growth is going to keep happening. People are coming down to Benita, and I think with COVID, that may even be accelerated. And while the downtown can accommodate some of that growth, I think there's a need for diversity in housing product. Most of the parcels downtown will be smaller parcels, and if they get developed, they'll most likely be developed as multifamily housing. This is an opportunity for a different type of community. As explained by Mr. Farrar, the Swans have a vision of a family-friendly community, a community which will offer different housing types, a community that will have a lot of open space, and a community that will also be very bike and pedestrian-friendly. Again, when we talk about COVID resiliency, what that means is you're going to have a great house that you can live in, but you're also going to have some outdoor space where if you do have to quarantine, or if you do have to stay home, you can still go outside, and you've got plenty of space to enjoy yourself and enjoy your family. So those are pictures of what we envision as part of this project, a high-quality project with some commercial. And again, the commercial would be at a scale that is consistent with this project, that would meet the local needs. It would be open to the public in that. It would be at the entrance of the project. It would be where connected to Benita Grand Mine, Benita Grand Boulevard, and also, it would be open to other residents in the area, again, creating some internal capture, reducing the trips on Benita Beach Road. So as part of our application, we provided numerous narratives that demonstrate how we are consistent with the comp plan. We've talked about compatibility, how this project fits in the area, is consistent with existing uses, and we've proposed many benefits as part of this Imperial District, and I'll go through some of those benefits right now. So the Imperial District is site-specific, and will provide assurances and predictability regarding the future development in that area. The district mandates a plan development rezone, which allows city council to put conditions and safeguards in place as part of that zoning. It allows for a transitional density and a community at a density of 2.1 units per acre that is consistent with surrounding uses. It implements applicable recommendations from the DRGR studies and the water task force. Again, 29 of those 34 recommendations were accepted by city council. Unfortunately, there haven't been many projects in the DRGR that have worked towards making those water resource improvements. We're trying to incorporate that within our project. We're trying to be that first step in creating those improvements. We have safeguards that ensure the appropriate form of development. There's a requirement for green infrastructure and water resource improvements, and that's the 20-acre filter marsh conveyance that we have talked about. The Imperial District also eliminates the alternative to a plan development, which is large lot ranchette-style development with well-inseptic. So that eliminates that option moving forward. It eliminates agriculture and the use of heavy insecticides and pesticides. It reduces water utilization, and we have some experts that will talk about that. It provides for 100% preservation of existing wetlands and restoration of those wetlands. It ensures that any future development in that area is connected to public water and sewer. It also will have an enhanced water management plan, and I'll talk about what that plan, what that looks like in reality, but these management plans will reduce nitrogen and phosphorus loading, and the vegetation within those, all the lakes on-site, will do a lot of nutrient intake. It will help, like I said, it'll be a part of the puzzle to create hydrological restoration and connection. It will safeguard and protect existing potable water wells. It will mandate Florida-friendly plantings. It will mandate that any application of pesticides is regulated and done by the HOA, not individual homeowners. It will create an internal system of trails, pathways, and sidewalks, and I'll show you exactly what is envisioned there. I think it's a great benefit for the residents in the community. It will provide quality housing. It will provide the internal capture we've talked about, and it will also provide a great community for future residents. So how does that get implemented? The Imperial District language, which is included here, has 12 conditions, and I won't go through the detail of those 12 conditions, but they pretty much implement what I just talked about, all the various benefits. First condition is a requirement for plan development, and that plan development must include the enhanced water, lake management plan. It must include the hydrological restoration plan. It must include the indigenous management plan, and we've done so as part of our zoning application. We've got, we have to demonstrate that we have adequate public facilities, which we have done through our application. We have to connect a public water and sewer, which we will be doing. Condition number two mandates that we provide a minimum of 60% open space, and that open space be dedicated to lakes, parks, conservation areas, passive recreation areas, et cetera. There's a requirement for Florida-friendly landscaping. Conditions four and five deal with these enhanced water quality and quantity requirements that go above and beyond what the district requires. Number six is for that public water sewer. Number seven is protection of the public water wells. Number eight is the requirement for the filter marsh. Number nine is a requirement that we shall have, we shall not have any impacts, detrimental impacts, to existing future potable water supplies. We have an expert that will tell you where we are obtaining our water and how we are not affecting the public water supply. Number 10 talks about the need to create a separate developer agreement as needed for off-site improvements. Again, we've committed to provide that 20-acre flowway, and we also recognize that if there's a need for off-site roadway improvements, we have committed to enter into developer agreement, get that worked out with the city. Number 11 prohibits golf courses, and number 12 addresses the commercial component. Again, there's a bunch of regulations associated with that that really mandate the scale of that commercial. Buildings can't be too tall. There is a limit to the total square footage, floor area ratio, and again, we want to ensure that the scale of the commercial will indeed be neighborhood commercial to meet the needs of the local community. So that almost concludes my treatment of the land use issues. This is the future land use map and the amendment to that map that's included in your packet. Right now, that area is identified in gray, which is DRGR. If you approve this, it would be identified in this yellow color with the hatching. This is simply existing zoning. This is an exhibit that shows what is meant by these enhanced lakes that we would have on-site. So all our lakes would have littoral plantings as depicted at the bottom right. So many of these water management ponds in new communities, you have grass going all the way to the water. This would have plantings. Those provide benefits for intake of phosphorus and nitrogen. Also, they create wading bird habitat, so every single lake within the community would be designed accordingly. This is a, these are pictures of what we envision also with this 20-acre conveyance filter marsh. Again, it allows water to flow through that area, but there are significant plantings in there that provide water quality improvements. Also, as we mentioned, this will be a great amenity for residents. We intend to have a walking trail along the entire length of that filter marsh. So I mentioned that we want to be fully transparent, let you know what is being proposed as part of this eventual project. So the next few slides, I'm going to show you what is being planned and what we've submitted for the mixed-use plan development. As mentioned, it allows for 700 dwelling units and just under 55,000 square feet of commercial. It will have three distinct neighborhoods, and it will implement all the regulations that are found in the Imperial District. that are found in the Imperial District. So these are pictures of what we envision from the quality of the neighborhood, the quality of the amenities. You're going to have clubhouse amenities, pools, courts, parks, and the network of pathways and trails. So this is an overall site plan. Again, north is to the left, south to the right. We gain access from Benita Grand. The commercial is right at the entrance. This is the southern neighborhood. It will have its own amenity center. It is connected by a spine road going to the central neighborhood and the northern neighborhood. This area in the middle is going to be a Grand Boulevard, turning circle here, Grand Boulevard with a landscape median. It'll create a sense of arrival. At the terminus here, you're going to have a very large amenity center. At the back of the amenity center is this flowway that goes the entire length, and also over here. Within that filter marsh conveyance, we have the existing wetlands that are going to be restored, incorporated within here. And the intent behind creating three separate neighborhoods is to have a human scale. Again, by making the neighborhoods a little smaller, but making sure they're all interconnected, the idea is that we want people to get to know their neighbors. We want them to feel comfortable, that they can easily access the amenities. All the amenities are within a quarter mile or less, which means a five-minute walk. So we want to make it very easy for someone over here or over here to walk to the amenity center. Again, they have their own, and they can walk to the amenity center, or they can walk to the commercial area. Also, when it comes to interconnections, the entire length here is less than a mile, and someone that lives here can easily take a bike ride to the commercial center. Or if they do walk, it would be a 15 to 20-minute walk. So again, very accessible, and hopefully through the system of pathways and trails, we reduce a lot of internal car traffic. So this is the master concept plan that we have provided. A few things I'd like to point out is that every tract is amenitized by either lake, enhanced buffers, preserve, or park. So if we, we look here, we have the conveyance filter marsh, which is 140 feet wide. We have a linear park here that would connect to the Larry Caguer Reserve, also would provide interconnection to the city's future park. All the buffers around the property are at least 30 feet in width. And this shows you, that was the northern neighborhood. This is the central neighborhood and the southern neighborhood. As you can see, filter marsh conveyance continues here. Again, all the tracks are amenitized. These are the development standards associated with the planned development, very similar to what was approved for Benita Grand Mine and also for sections one and two. And this is a depiction of the open space and green space. Again, this clearly shows that most of the property will be open space, will be green space. Everything in blue, everything in green is open space. The gray areas are the tracks. And this is a depiction of that system of pathways and trails. Everything in yellow are on-street facilities. Everything in orange represents off-street pathways. As you can see, someone can bike or walk or run around the entire community. And all these pathways and trails connect back to the amenity centers and connect to the other neighborhoods. So as you can see, this will continue all the way south to the southern neighborhood and pedestrian access around the entire perimeter of the project. So this is what we envision with our pathways and trails. We envision them being heavily vegetated. The bottom-left picture is a good example of what this water conveyance filter marsh could look like, where you've got water feature on one side, a multi-use path on the other, and creates not only environmental benefits, but a great amenity for the residents. These are simply cross-sections showing this filter marsh conveyance, bike-ped facility on this side, water in the middle, a lot of plantings that create filtering benefits. Cross-section of the other buffers that would incorporate bike-ped facilities within the buffer. This is a page that deals with the deviations that we are asking. We believe all the deviations create benefits and enhancement to design of the community. And with that, I will conclude my portion. The next person to speak is Ted Trish. He's our transportation consultant. Ted could not be with us today, but he is joining us virtually, so the IT people will be able to connect him through.
Yeah, yeah. The queue the, 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 the.
Okay. And I'll be here just queuing the slideshow for him.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Yes. Good morning. Ted Trish with TR Transportation Consultants. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to join remotely. I just briefly want to summarize the transportation analysis that was conducted as part of this The comprehensive plan analysis that's required from a transportation perspective looks at, looks at two things that are required by the city. It looks at the impacts of the land use change on the long-range transportation plan as adopted by the Lee County Metropolitan Planning Organization, which the city is a part of. Then it also looks at the impact to your five-year capital improvement program. And based on the land use change, are any changes to those two plans necessary in order to accommodate the change in land use? And our analysis concludes that there are no changes necessary to either of those adopted documents based on the requirements that are presented. The analysis we prepared is consistent with the requirements of the city and their administrative codes. We met with your transportation staff via email and developing a methodology to prepare the traffic analysis that was submitted and addressed comments regarding the analysis as they were provided by the city. The original analysis that we prepared for the long-range transportation impacts looked at, at the time, the 2040 long-range transportation plan. That was what was adopted at the time of our report. In December of 2020, the NPO adopted the new 2045 land use plan. So prior to the LPA hearing, we provided an updated level of service analysis to the city, looking at the impacts to that newly adopted 2045 plan. And again, our conclusions remain the same, that this project does not cause any roadway segments within the study area to operate below the adopted level of service standards. Now, there are roadways in the study area that are shown in 2045 to operate below the level of service standard, but those roadways are shown to operate in that condition prior to the traffic from this project being added to the network. So therefore, it's not the responsibility of this applicant to mitigate issues that are already pre-existing prior to our conditions. That's what the updated long-range transportation plan will address as it moves forward, as it moves forward. And again, the long-range plan is updated every five years by the NPO. This map here shows the most recent 2045 financially feasible plan and the projects that are proposed by 2045 in the Lee County NPO. One thing I do want to point out as well, that staff requested, is that we include the trips from the adjacent Benita Grand Mine project, which we did in our analysis. So those trips from the Benita Grand Mine project, as approved by the city, are included in our analysis. The next step, as Patrick said, is the MPD application. Again, that'll look at a little more specific analysis. Again, we've submitted that to the city, again pursuant to their administrative codes and the methodology that was agreed to with the city staff. And then again, when this project reaches the development order stage, we'll do another traffic study for this project. So there's three, there's three times that this project will be looked at from a transportation perspective and the impacts it will have on the roadway network. Florida statutes, Chapter 163, and again, as Patrick indicated earlier, allow for the zonings and land use changes to move forward and allow the developer to enter into either a proportionate share agreement or a developer's agreement to address any impacts that they may have. And that's what we're proposing, as Patrick indicated. So we're consistent with the Florida statutes in moving this application forward and addressing the transportation concerns that the city may have. But again, the conclusions of our analysis, and as agreed to in the staff report, that this project does not cause any of the roadways in the study area to go below the adopted level of service standards. And again, as we move through the zoning and the development order process, a more specific look will be made at the intersections and roadways to determine, as part of a developer's agreement, does anything in addition need to be done, other than the payment of the roadway impact fees that was highlighted by Sarah at the beginning of our presentation. So the conclusion is we're, we're consistent with the comprehensive plan, the goals and objectives and the comp plan as they relate to transportation. And I'll be here at the end of our presentation for any questions. Thank you.
The next speaker coming up is Shane Johnson, and he will discuss environmental issues.
Shane Johnson, for the record, I'm a senior ecologist with the environmental consulting firm of Passarella and Associates. Here today to summarize the information that's contained in our environmental assessment report that was prepared for this comprehensive plan amendment. And for reference, that report is included in your packet, starting on page 191. So the information I'll be touching on that's contained in the environmental assessment report includes existing land uses, wetlands, and protected species. I'll also touch on the indigenous vegetation and protected species management plans that we had prepared as part of the parallel zoning process. Although that is zoning-related, there are some comments in the staff report that kind of overlap into that realm. So I'll be briefly touching on these management plans as well. So starting with a 1972 historic aerial of the project, I think this is an important one to start with. And this reinforces what Patrick had described in his presentation, that there's really very little environmental quality within this project site. And there's nothing unique as far as anything environmental, that's, that's for certain. In fact, just the opposite, it's been degraded for many decades, as you can see, as evidenced by this 1972 aerial. It's an intensive citrus grove production at this time. The only thing native, as far as vegetation is concerned on the site, is this small Cypress wetland that straddles the eastern property boundary. That's about four acres. So the project has been disturbed at multiple levels. Obviously, the native vegetation had to be cleared initially to pave the way for this citrus grove operation. So it's been disturbed from a vegetative perspective. Also, and you can see this on the 72 aerial, there's all these north-south and east-west ditches. If you know anything about citrus groves, they have to be planted in well-drained soils that are high and dry, high and dry, well-drained soils. So these lines that I pointed out are ditches, deep ditches, that efficiently move water away from these citrus trees into these ditch systems, effectively draining the landscape. Okay? So yes, the project is in the DRGR, but really the take-home message on this slide is it's been environmentally degraded for many, many decades. And want to point out before we move on that there's even a separate berm and ditch system surrounding that existing Cypress wetland, further isolating it from a hydrologic perspective. There's no exchange of hydrologic resources externally with that wetland system. It's isolated by that berm. So fast-forwarding to existing conditions, this is Lee County's most current aerial The site contains primarily non-indigenous land uses, and that's consistent with what we saw in the 72 aerial. The existing land uses include primarily improved pasture, hayfields, and mixed exotic vegetation. So there's still agricultural uses on the property, however, the uses have changed over time, citrus to now cattle grazing. And the mixed exotic vegetation is essentially this signature that's kind of an essential portion of the property. It's a square-shaped signature. And that's an assortment of exotic vegetation that is, that is recruited over time due to that portion of the property being fallow, not maintained, or mowed. And it's really an assortment of Melaleuca, Brazilian pepper, early fachia, and Java plum. Very characteristic of heavily disturbed sites that you see in South Florida. They tend to recruit back with exotic vegetation, not native vegetation. So that represents, this recruitment of exotic vegetation, that is, represents another tier or level of disturbance on the property. Again, it's been, the existing native vegetation's been removed. You have this hydrologic manipulation of water levels, and then you have this recruitment of exotic vegetation. Just outlining the levels of disturbance that have, has occurred on this property over many decades. I just want to point out that the Cypress wetland is still there, straddling the eastern property boundary, and that will be preserved and enhanced. I'll talk more about that in detail. So when we, meaning Passarella and Associates, first go onto a piece of property, what we do is we map the vegetation associations or the land uses that make up the property. So we had done this in March of 2020 as part of this comprehensive plan amendment application. And essentially, this graphic shows the land uses summarized into three main categories. You've got uplands, wetlands, and surface waters. So the graphic on the left is the entire property. The graphic on the right has a little inset here along, kind of in this east-central portion of the property, there's a lot going on, so we kind of blew that up, and that's sort of a blown-up portion of that inset on the right. So the uplands constitute approximately 303 acres of the site, or 93% of the site, well beyond the majority. And that includes, again, the upland improved pasture and the hayfields, and also the mixed exotic vegetation that I mentioned in the, in the previous slide. And there were no rare or unique upland or unique upland habitat types identified within the project site. The areas in green are the existing wetland areas. Those will be preserved and enhanced. They constitute approximately four acres and consist of cypress and willow wetland types. And last but not least, the areas in blue are the surface waters, and those are the ditches and swales and cow ponds. And these features have been, you know, recontoured over the years to kind of meet past and present agricultural requirements. And these areas total just over 20 acres. So this next slide is essentially the same as the previous slide I showed you with the uplands, wetlands, and surface waters on it, except it overlays the protected species that we had observed on the property during our March 2020 protected species survey. So there were three wildlife species observed during that survey, which included the American alligator, crested caracara, and woodstork, and two listed plant species, including the northern needle leaf and cardinal airplant. So on the graphic on the left, one of the American alligators was observed utilizing a ditch swale in the northern portion of the site. The caracara were observed in the southern portion of the site. And if you go and look at the graphic on the right-hand side of this exhibit, there was another woodstork, or alligator, observed in the swale, also a woodstork in the swale. And all of the listed plant species I mentioned are within the existing wetland area that will be preserved. So there was no nesting or denning of any wildlife species observed during our protected species survey on the project site. With respect to indigenous vegetation restoration, all of the areas that you see in color here will be preserved, placed under conservation easement, and preserved in perpetuity. The light-green areas are the water conveyance feature areas that run along the entire eastern boundary that Patrick had mentioned. And since these areas are in existing uplands, there's going to be, you know, extensive excavation, grading, and replanting with native vegetation to achieve that freshwater filter marsh habitat type. This will provide a multitude of benefits, including water conveyance and storage, wildlife habitat, not just for wading birds, but a variety of aquatic species such as alligators, and nutrient uptake, which is one of the purposes of a filter marsh, to uptake nutrients, and also an aesthetic feature for the residents to enjoy. So all the colored areas here, again, will be placed under conservation easement, preserved in perpetuity. They total approximately 24 acres. And this water conveyance is about 20 acres of that, again, the light-green color. So these other two green colors that you see on the map, the darker green are portions of the existing wetlands that contain less than 50% exotic vegetation. So essentially, those will be the wetland enhancement areas. Exotic vegetation will be removed from those areas. This intermediate green color that you see here are portions of the existing wetlands that contain greater than 50% exotic vegetation. In these areas, exotics will be removed, exotic vegetation will be removed, and native plantings will be installed. Last but not least, on this slide, you've got the areas in orange here, which is a small portion of upland that will be preserved and enhanced as part of this overall conservation area. And we try to get creative with what we can do within this area. And so we have spec in accordance with our management plan to establish a tropical hardwood hammock and have plantings that would be in a natural kind of tropical hardwood hammock assemblage as part of our plan. And that would be considered a rare and unique upland habitat type. So we try to get creative with the design in this area. Okay, last slide, I wanted to touch on the management plans we prepared as part of the zoning effort. The first is the Indigenous Preservation, Restoration, and Management Plan. This contains all the details of the enhancement and restoration activities that I explained on the previous slide for the 24-acre conservation area. And this will include, but is not limited to necessarily, exotic vegetation removal techniques, the strategy on how berms and ditch will be removed. Again, I talked about the berm system that surrounds the existing wetland area that will be removed. So there'll be some hydrologic continuity between the water conveyance feature and the existing wetland areas. The plan will also include grading activities associated with the conveyance feature, and the native plants that we intend to install in the conservation areas. And just for reference, within the conservation areas, we intend to have over 4,000 trees and over 10,000 ground cover species. So that's just within the conservation area, not, doesn't include any of the other Florida-friendly plants that will be planted as part of the general landscaping So this plan, the Indigenous Preservation, Restoration, and Management Plan, addresses staff's comments on page four of the staff report with respect to the existing wetlands containing high levels of exotic vegetation. Well, we have a plan for that, and that's this plan. Next is the Protected Species and Human Wildlife Coexistence Plan. This contains management activities for all of the wildlife species that we observe utilizing the property, again, the American alligator, listed wading birds, and the crested caracara, but also includes management activities for the Florida panther and Florida black bear. Also contains wildlife fencing component, which is consistent with Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission Recommendations, or FWC for short. So just want to kind of elaborate on this last bullet point here before I conclude. This relates to comments received from FWC during the South Florida Water Management District ERP review process, and it also relates to comments generated by staff on pages 18 and 19 of the staff report, which are specifically related to the Florida panther and the Florida panther primary zone, which is proximate to the northern property boundary. So first, with respect to FWC's comments, again, these were received during the South Florida Water Management District ERP review process on October, in October 2020. I'm summarizing here, FWC staff encourages project designs and awareness programs that reduce the risk of human-wildlife interactions. They go on to recommend three things here. First, FWC staff recommends that the applicant consider a six-foot perimeter fence along the northern property line, which would help deter deer and panther incursions into the proposed park and residential areas. Two, to further reduce the potential for human-wildlife interactions, FWC recommends that the applicant incorporate the Living with Panthers Information brochure and have that be provided to residents. And three, FWC recommends that garbage management practices are incorporated to help reduce attractiveness for panther-prey species. So the applicant has done all of this. They've incorporated the fencing that was required, or recommended rather, by FWC, incorporated the informational pamphlets regarding Florida panther into the Protected Species and Human Wildlife Coexistence Plan, and also incorporated the garbage management practices as part of that plan as well. So the applicant has heeded all of the recommendations that FWC had with respect to Florida panther. Now, regarding staff's comments, again, this is on pages 18 and 19 of the staff report. Summarizing here, the staff says, while the applicant mentions a fence, staff is considering multiple options, including a physical barrier, such as the proposed fence or wall, or a spatial buffer, such as an open space buffer. Now, this is referring to the northern end of the property where it interfaces with the Keiker Preserve. With that said, the applicant prefers the fence option for a variety of reasons. One, it's what FWC was recommending, and they've already incorporated that into their Protected Species and Human Wildlife Coexistence Plan. Two, when you look at the northern part of the property, you really have suboptimal panther habitat in that portion of the site. There's really nothing there. It's improved pasture. There's no trees or thick shrubs that really provide suitable cover for the species. And three, if you created any sort of natural open space buffer, that may encourage panther or their prey species from coming to come further south toward development, which is contrary to one of the overall goals of our Protected Species and Human Wildlife Coexistence Plan, is to try to minimize human-wildlife interactions. So lastly, I presented this information with respect to Florida panther to the LPA, and staff had a chance to come up and comment on that. As I recall, and based on my interpretation of their comments, and they can correct me if I'm wrong in my interpretation or what I'm recalling, is they, they said that they weren't necessarily married to this open-space buffer concept, and they would be amenable to the fence option since it was a direct recommendation from FWC. So with that, that concludes my presentation. We'll be available for questions.
Good morning. I'm Michael Pappas, registered professional engineer, and currently the Director of Engineering for RWA. Today, I'm here to give an overview of the Imperial District Severe Water Management System. The Imperial District is within the 1,280-acre Citrus Park Water Management System. Citrus Park Water Management System received a South Florida Water Management District permit in 1980 to develop that entire 1,280-acre project into a residential community. Per that permit, a perimeter berm and dike was constructed around the entire 1,280-acre citrus, citrus park surface water management system. The Imperial District is within that citrus park existing perimeter berm and dike system today. The Imperial property is currently used for agriculture, as Shane pointed out, and has existing ditches throughout the property. Those ditches were constructed when it was farmed as a citrus grove originally. And those ditches allow the swift conveyance of rainfall into the existing citrus park lakes and canals as part of the overall citrus park water management system. RWA has submitted a South Florida Water Management District permit application for the Imperial District Severe Project. Permit approval is expected any day on that. The project has been designed in accordance with all South Florida Water Management District regulations and design criterias and the Imperial District Enhanced requirements. As part of the South Florida Water Management District permitting, a pre-versus-post developed runoff analysis was completed and submitted to South Florida Water Management District for the Imperial District to demonstrate the project will not have an adverse impact on adjacent properties or the community. As part of that analysis, the northern basin, which is the northern half of the project, once it's developed, our calculations show that it'll have a discharge 79% less than the pre-development conditions of the farm fields today. And the southern basin, we expect that to discharge 85% less than the pre-development conditions, showing that it'll have no adverse impacts. So, thank you.
Good morning. Kirk Martin with Water Science Associates. Is my PowerPoint ready? Next slide, please. Oh, that's me, sorry. Thank you. The Imperial District was actually patterned after a concept developed for Lee County back in 2013 called the Environment Enhancement Overlay. And the concept of that was that the public benefit could be realized in terms of water resources, hydrologic, and environmental restoration paid for by private development. In fact, in fact, much of the studies done for the DRGR, both for Benita Springs and for Lee County, have suggested that, that increased density was reasonable within the DRGR, but in fact, it'd be even more beneficial if it was, if some of the benefit of that was used for the hydrologic restoration. I had the benefit and privilege of being part of the first environmental enhancement overlay done in Lee County. It required over 50% of the property be put into preserve and open space. It provide, required that we restore or enhance groundwater levels and reconnect existing flowways to other properties. And one of the things that happened during that process is the question came up, how do you know somebody else's, you know, your flowways don't go anywhere? Well, the concept was, we didn't control anybody else's property, we only controlled our property. And in fact, one of my favorite quotes from the Lee County attorney at that time was that the DRGR was a jigsaw puzzle with all these burned and ditched properties, and, but the pieces were on the table, pieces were being held by individuals. So we put our piece on the table, and since that time in 2013, other projects have come in there and connected to those pieces. So in a similar fashion, we've created a potential conveyance on this property, which I'll talk about, and others have. We don't know if that's the right place or not, but what we're doing is we're putting a piece on the table that provides for that regional benefit that we're all looking for. My favorite quote during that time, it was, it was a highly-approved project, but Commissioner Frank Mann, who's most people know as the, probably the more environmental-minded commissioner, made the comment that in 20 years of dealing with the DRGR, this is the first time something's going to be actually restored. And that's what we're trying to propose here as well. So this Imperial District, it requires all those same things, you know, greater than 50% open space, reconnection of flowways to the extent possible, restoration and/or enhancement of groundwater levels and recharge. You heard Mike Pappas just talk about reduction in discharges of approximately 80%. He had to put that in flashing red lights, that's a huge deal. And the Imperial District, as noted in my slide here, requires that we, that we have multiple ways of dealing with water quality that vastly improves stormwater treatment and provides storage. That includes a treatment train consisting of sediment traps, dry-and-wet retention, vegetated swells, retinal zones, planet filter marshes, that all provide that enhanced level treatment and storage on-site. In addition, as we talked about, we provided for this conveyance. As I said, is it the right place? Is it, will it ever be used for a conveyance? I don't know. But looking at the right-hand slide, or picture on my slide there, we know that the regional flow regime in Benita Springs has been, has been a problem for everyone. So to the extent that we could play a part in that, with the Keiker Preserve to the north, with the 278 parcel to the southwest, with Lightner Creek, all these are improvements we've all talked about, and we're making that available, at least with this project going forward. With regard to irrigation, as noted, we'll be getting our public supply from Benita Springs Utilities. But this project has a long history of agriculture use. In fact, we're proposing to do 70% reduction in that historic use. In fact, we're proposing to do 70% reduction in that historic use. We'll be using the combination of stormwater harvesting from our lake system with recharge from a zone at a depth of 300 to 400 feet called the Mid Hawthorne Aquifer. So, we're not competing in any of the zones that BSU is currently using. We'll providing a mildly brackish source mixed in with the freshwater lakes to create a freshwater irrigation program, and again, at a 70% reduction over what's currently, or what's been done in the past. And in fact, our waters permit is pending, waiting on the ERP application to be deemed And finally, just in conclusion, as others noted before, we're required to have an enhanced lake management plan, a hydrologic restoration plan. We're required to restore and accommodate existing and historical flowways, restore and accommodate historic groundwater levels, provide a minimum of 50% increase over current water, or required water treatment by the Water Management District, and provide an overall enhancement of hydrologic conditions on the site. I'll be available for questions, and turn it over to Patrick.
Hey. Thank you for the record again, Patrick Vannas. I am going to wrap things up. We are almost there. Got a few slides concluding our presentation. So, what you have before you today is a staff report that raises concerns. Concerns over development of DRGR, concerns over increased density, flooding, traffic, and proximity to the primary zone. And rightfully so. I can see why they've brought up those concerns. But what we've done is, we've systematically provided an application and provided a presentation today that addresses all those issues. If you look in the staff report, they do identify those concerns, and our rebuttal is that we can address those, there are means to address those appropriately, and that we can even create a benefit. However, if you look in the report, they don't refute our findings when it comes to the environment, the water management system, the traffic. They do highlight concerns, but there is no substantial and competent evidence refuting our conclusions. Moreover, we've had two neighborhood information meetings for this project. They were open to the public. There were also virtual meetings where people could attend via Zoom. And we've had very little attendance and no expressed objection to the overall project. People had questions. People wanted to know more details. People had specific things that they suggested, but no overall objection. So, when it comes to the appropriateness of development and public concern over development in the DRGR, we just have not experienced that as part of our process. So, in conclusion, we believe that it is appropriate to conclude that development in this particular area of the DRGR is appropriate and will provide a public benefit. We believe that the requested density is supported by current and proposed development in the area, and will supply much-needed housing as the city continues to grow. Surface water drainage will be improved. Traffic impacts are not anticipated from this project and will be addressed via a developer agreement if necessary. And when it comes to Panther issues and proximity to Panther zones, I think we have fully addressed that, and I think we can reach an agreement as to how to treat that issue with staff. As mentioned, when it comes to the appropriateness of development in this area, we do have some precedence with Bonita Grand Mine and the Urban Fridge, which is also in the eastern part of the county and surrounded by conservation lands on all three sides. So, these conclusions are supported by numerous reports that were commissioned by the city. Again, many of those reports recommended densities ranging from two units per acre all the way to 10. Our proposed density is at the very low end of that, at 2.1 units per acre. Also, I think it's important to go back to 2016, when the previous council did put forward an ordinance saying, "We've conducted our studies of the DRGR, no need to make any changes, and we're not going to allow for increased densities or different uses in the DRGR." And the city council did not move forward with that ordinance because at the recommendation of outside council, it was suggested that there was no substantial evidence supporting those conclusions. And we have copies of the recommendation from outside council and that ordinance that we've provided to staff. So, with regards to the two questions, the two big questions that I posed at the beginning of the presentation of, "Is this an appropriate place for development in the city? And is this the type of development and the form of development that will provide safeguards and ensure benefits, not only for the residents of that area, but for the entire city?" And again, we conclude that the answer is yes to both of those questions. And based on the application we've submitted, the evidence that we've submitted, and based on the presentation today, we are requesting that you approve our request to transmit this comp plan amendment to the state. So, with that said, we will conclude, and we are available for any questions you may have.
At this time, council, I'd recommend taking just maybe a 10-minute break, stretch your legs a little bit, and then staff will come and give their presentation.
City Attorney? City Attorney? Are we back yet?
We can go ahead and get started. Councilwoman Carr will be here shortly, if you're ready to go in staff.
Good morning still, City Council. Mike Feegon, Community Development for the Record, here to give the staff presentation. Before I get started with that, would anybody like a hard copy printout of the staff presentation? You guys probably already have it, but I figured I'd ask just in case. Okay, good. We'll go ahead and get started. Any questions?
Good job, Mike.
Thank you. All right. So, the staff review team that reviewed this request along with myself, we have Sean Gibbons, Laura Gibson, Tricia Goff, Tom Ross, Jay Sweet, Lee County, and Thiriak in Spain. We do have all these disciplines available for you today on the city side, should you have any specific questions in any of those specific areas. As we know by now, the request is a two-pronged request, as described in the green sheet and in the staff report and in the applicant's presentation, to create the Imperial District Future Land Use category and establish the text to regulate that category. The second prong of the request would be to amend the future land use map then for 328 acres plus or minus from the DRGR to the Imperial District Future Land Use category. The timeline of events, we don't need to go through all of that necessarily, but just letting you know that this is a process that did start in February of last year. There was a lot of back and forth regarding the submittal in terms of requests for additional information and trying to get some of these additional questions answered. The neighborhood meeting requirements that the applicant successfully met, this was heard before the LPA back on March 25th, and we are here today to discuss the transmittal of this particular request to the DEO. I'll probably go through the next few slides relatively quickly. The citywide location map, I think we're all very familiar at this point with where this project is located. It's near the northern city boundary. It borders Citrus Park to the west and Bonita Grand Mine to the east. And again, on the north side is Lee County Conservation Lands, which is proposed to become the Larry Keiker Preserve and also be a park feature. Zooming in, just so we're a little bit more familiar, the three stars represent the three development areas that are being proposed as part of the concurrent zoning request, the northern neighborhood, central neighborhood, and southern neighborhood, and you can see where they line up with regards to Citrus Park and the mine. And as the applicant had shown in their presentation, that's what the proposed future land use map designation would look like with the subject property. Again, you have Citrus Park to the west and the mine directly to the east of this project. We already just touched on that. Again, the future land use of the project currently is DRGR, and the zoning is agricultural and mobile home. And the existing uses of the property are agricultural, residential, and then a significant portion of the property is also still vacant. As far as consistency with the Bonita Plan, the City of Bonita Springs Comprehensive Plan, there were multiple sections that were analyzed, goals, objectives, and policies. All of those are outlined in the staff report. The way it was done was, you provided the code section, the applicant's analysis, and then the staff response to that analysis. That's how the staff report was set up, and those were the sections that were discussed directly within your staff report. So, when you look at all of that, you do come up with some findings of fact, such as the fact that we are talking about eight parcels that are totaling approximately 328 acres. There is a companion zoning application that has been submitted along with this request. The request is for 700 dwelling units and commercial tracts not to exceed five acres total. Again, the future land use category right now is DRGR, which allows one dwelling unit for every 10 acres, and the proposed density as part of this request is 2.1 units per acre. We also have traffic data that discusses some concerns with the segments, and then there were some additional revised data that the applicant had talked about based on the 2045 MPO plan. We do have our traffic engineer here to discuss that portion of the project with you. We also discussed about the wetlands being restored. As the applicant had mentioned, there is a four-acre wetland site that is heavily infested with exotics, and they did propose a restoration plan as part of their concurrent plan development zoning application. And the drainage conveyance, which is to be located along the eastern side and the southern portions of the project, and to try and provide some ability to take on additional stormwater for the area. A few other aspects that were touched on and that are within the request language include a requirement for 60% open space, a requirement for connection to city water and sewer, a phasing schedule as part of the plan development to help determine which segments and which portions are able to get constructed first, so to speak, and the idea that they are providing some neighborhood commercial uses to try and capture some of those traffic trips that are going to be occurring out there. So, the real question becomes, how does all of this fit into or address the historic issues of the DRGR? And when we talk about the historic issues of the DRGR, we're talking about density, we're talking about traffic, flooding and stormwater, and environmental concerns. So, to start off with, we'll talk a little bit about density. As the applicant had stated, they are aware that the Bonita Plan calculates density on a per gross acre and not a net acreage, per se. So, right now, at one unit per 10 acres, you're looking at approximately 32 dwelling units that would be permitted out there right now. There were several other developments that were cited by the applicant in their analysis and in their report with regards to how this project melds in with those. And one of the items that was brought up was, this project could help serve as a step-down approach for density, in that you have a higher density from Citrus Park on the west to this project, to Bonita Grand Mine to the east, and it represents a step-down in density. That's an interesting approach in the sense that that has been used before. Usually, you use a step-down density approach in urban areas, and it helps to solidify an urban core, like in your downtown, for an example, where you concentrate the highest density and intensity in the center, and then you step down as you go further out. It's not really a technique that's used in overly suburban areas, so it was unique to somewhat see that that approach presented as a reason for support for the project. One of the projects that was brought up several times by the applicant is the Bonita Grand Mine. And what you had heard was that the mine essentially set the precedent for how to develop in the DRGR. What you also heard, though, was that the mine is an apples-and-oranges comparison to this particular project. And I would argue, from the staff perspective, that you can't do both. Either the precedent is set, and you propose your argument based on that precedent, or it's an apples-and-oranges comparison. Trying to do both analytically, I think raises a lot of concerns. So, from the staff perspective, I think it's either one or the other. And I know Mr. Thiriak has some statements he can make about whether or not the mine actually sets the precedent. In fact, I'm pretty sure in the settlement agreement, it explicitly states that in no way, shape, or form, should the mine be setting a precedent for how to develop in the DRGR. Even if it did, in theory, let's just say that it did, then perhaps the conversation would start at something that is a little bit more representative of what was approved as part of that settlement agreement, such as a half a unit per acre, not 2.1 units per acre. Setting aside land for public parks and public spaces, setting aside additional land for water quality studies, none of which were included in this particular application. I would also note that, as the applicant had stated, there have been several attempts to amend the policies of the Comprehensive Plan, including DRGR policies, over the last 20-plus years within the city. The city met its obligation to evaluate the DRGR policies, and the applicant cited many studies and reports that were provided to city council with regards to what to do in the DRGR. The city made the decision that they were okay with the way things were at one unit per 10 acres, very low density, low intensity, focus on conservation uses overall, and that's the way the policies are currently written. I would also note that the policies that were cited, again, were not formally adopted by city council. And I would also note that, so, in essence, when they're talking about the densities that are brought up in those policies and them being on the lower end, yes, that's true. They're on the lower end of some of those studies in terms of density, but those studies were never adopted by city council. were never adopted by City Council. I would also note that until you have another strategic session, your strategic priorities for 2020 included DRGR conservation, specifically on the north end of the city, which is where a project like this is located. Another strategic priority was to focus instead on density and intensity for your downtown revitalization area. And this would, to a certain extent, send a mixed message that additional density and construction opportunities are open in the DRGR when you have policies that don't necessarily support that. Turning over to traffic, I am going to turn the microphone over to Tom Ross, one of the engineers who specifically reviewed the traffic report that was provided by the applicant.
My name, for record, my name is Tom Ross. I'm a traffic engineer with Jacobs Engineering here on behalf of community development staff. So I want to talk a little bit about traffic, and bear with me, I know it's not the most exciting subject for everyone, but I think it's one of the critical elements in this entire application. On the slide here, you can see the development here is located here adjacent to the mine, and their access will be along Benita Beach Road, where Benita Beach Road meets Terry Street. Now currently today, Terry Street has about 453 peak hour trips in the peak direction during peak season, and Benita Grand Drive has approximately 465 trips during the peak hour in the peak direction. Now, most of that traffic is coming from these existing units up here in this location. Some of it is the mine traffic, the trucks hauling material out of the mine, and some of it also occurs from traffic coming out further east on Benita Beach Road that, rather than use Benita Beach Road all the way through and deal with all those traffic signals and some of the congestion near the interchange, intend to go, you know, north on Benita Grand Drive and east on, or west on Terry to get into the downtown area and over to 41. So it serves as somewhat of a bypass for Benita Beach Road, and it also serves all of this development. So the very critical links in your transportation system. And I'll add that it's the only, other than Benita Beach Road, it's the only east-west facility that crosses over I-75. So it's the last one to the north. So it's the only way these folks up in here have to get out and get over to the west side of 75 or to get, or Benita Grand Drive to get down to Benita Beach Road. So very important. Now, bear with me just a few minutes, because I'm going to walk you through this table. There's a lot of numbers here, but I want to focus on a few things one at a time. And it's important that you kind of follow along with what I'm saying to make sure that we fully understand what we're talking about when we talk about traffic and we talk about numbers. There's a lot of numbers out there, but it's important to understand what they really mean. And a lot of times, traffic engineers will give a lot of figures and numbers and compare things and so forth, but if you don't really understand fully what it means and how it relates to everybody's driving and how it relates to everybody's experienced driving, it doesn't mean a whole lot. So first, I'll start by saying that all of the information on this table, we took that information from the applicant's TIS, their traffic impact statement. We reviewed that statement, and we agree with all the numbers that they presented in their traffic impact statement. So there's no dispute on the actual facts of these numbers. So these are the actual numbers from their document. So I'm going to start over here on the column, the furthest column over here on the left. Those numbers are the same numbers that were on the slide I just showed you with the map. Those are the existing traffic volumes that were counted in 2020, City's count program done last year. Now, the next column I want you to focus on is the second column from the right, the one that says level of service E capacity. Those are the actual capacities for those roadways. So for Benita Grand Drive, it's 740, and for East Terry Street, it's 860. That's peak hour, peak direction, volume, that's traveling in one direction. Now, what does that really mean? Say 860 or 740, what does that really mean? Well, if we think about it in terms of time, that's all happening within one hour. That's a constant stream of traffic. So if you do the math and you divide that up, you basically come to a number that gets you about one car every four to five seconds. Think about that. One car every four or five seconds. That's a constant stream of cars. Now, I'm not sure about anybody else here, but I took driver's ed back in 1978, I'll date myself a little bit, and when I took driver's ed, they taught you proper following distance was two seconds. Anybody remember the two-second rule? Right, makes sense, it's safe. And my kids just recently took driver's ed a few years ago. Now they're teaching them three seconds, a three-second following rule. Now, the American Association of Highway Transportation Officials, they use a figure of two and a half seconds as the average time it takes for a human being to be able to see something happen in front of them while they're driving and react to it and take an action. Now, that include, that time includes the time you see something, you realize what's happening, your brain processes that, and then you actually decide, what am I going to do? Am I going to stop? Am I going to swerve out of the way? What am I going to do? That's before you even apply your foot onto the brake. So think about that. When we say that the current capacity is, allows cars to be traveling at four to five seconds between them, and you only have two and a half seconds to react, it doesn't leave a lot of margin, does it? Right? So there's a good reason why those capacities are established at those levels. All right? So let's go back and talk about the existing volumes right now. Those volumes roughly are about 50 to 60% of the actual capacity of those roadways. And if you translate that into the time, you're talking about roughly seven seconds or so of distance between cars. Now, that's a little more margin, and it's a little bit easier to deal with that, and so it's okay, it's acceptable. Means traffic is flowing okay today. But let's look to the column next to that, the next column going from left to right, and that's the one that's titled annual growth. And you can see those numbers, those are based on the last five years of counts done in the city for those two roads. We see growth rates ranging from eight to almost 12%. Now, how many of us would love to have that kind of return on your investments every year, huh? That's a pretty good growth rate. And so with that kind of growth rate, you're going to see traffic conditions continue to get tighter and tighter, and so that it won't take long before we approach that capacity. Now, let's talk about the next column over to the right of that. Benita Grand, Benita Grand RPD traffic. That's the traffic from the mine. That represents the traffic coming from all the 700 units that were approved, already approved for the mine development, once the mine has been completed. So when you take that traffic growth, that growth rate, add in the mine traffic, and now you come to the next column, that's 2025, that's the total volume of traffic between growth and the mine that's already been approved, they're going to be on those two roads by Now, remember, we're going to skip over this next column, and remember, I said the capacities, what were those capacities? So for Benita Grand Drive, the capacity's 740, but by 2025, we're going to be at 840 trips. That road will be over capacity in 2025. And the same thing is true for Terry Street. And this is without any other additional development, but with already what's approved at the mine, those two roads will be over capacity. Now, let's take a look at the next column over. That's 2045. Notice anything peculiar? The numbers go down. Has anybody ever seen a road where traffic went down over the years without any new roadways being built? There are no new roadways parallel to these two roadways in the long-range plan. So where else is the traffic going to grow? Unless people leave Benita Springs, which doesn't appear to be that that's what's happening, right? Everybody's moving here, we're trying to build more units, where would that traffic go? Well, I can tell you that I was a little curious when I saw that, and I looked back at, took a little digging into the model, and what I found was, is that the model used here in this case, which is the model that's, the model that's used for the counties or for the MPO's Long Range Transportation Plan, which has been adopted by the MPO, that model doesn't do a very good job of predicting traffic on those two roads. Now, there's a number of reasons for that, but it really comes down to, and I'm going to go right back to the previous slide just for a minute so you can kind of see the context. The model network only has Terry Street and Benita Grand in it in this area. Out here, there's nothing in the model, other than the land use. So that land use has no place to go but these two roads. But because those two roads are located such that they are in the model, and Benita Beach Road is located connected to I-75, what it typically does is it pulls the traffic in and assigns it that way, right? Now, when they adopt these models, the first thing they have to do is they have to do a validation of the model to make sure that it really works. And what they do is they basically build a model for today's conditions. So for example, they built a model that had all the exact same roadways that were in, and this was done, I think it was 2015 or 2017. They built a model that had all the roadways that were actually in existence because they knew what they were, and they included all the land use that was actually in those areas because they knew what that was. And they ran the model, and they compared that output to the actual traffic counts. And based on that, that's how they validate the model. They say, well, how close does it match what those existing counts show? And overall, generally through the model, it did pretty good. And statistically, they're required by the rules to only have to have so many roadway links meeting a certain threshold of tolerance to those actual traffic counts. They can deviate a little bit, but they can only deviate so far, and only so many roads can deviate. And so overall, the model got a great score. But keep in mind, this model is huge. It extends all the way to the south end of Collier County and goes all the way up, includes Polk County, includes everything over to the Gulf, and includes everything back over to US 27. This is a big model, and there's a lot of links in there. And so it's very hard to check every single little one. So somehow, these two roadway links slip by, and those two roadway links underreported for that validation, and likewise are doing the same thing for 2045. So it makes no sense that traffic is going to decrease 20 years past, or 20 years later. You know, it's going to continue to grow, go up. So we've chosen to ignore that 2045 because the more immediate problem that we're seeing is in 2025. Look again, 2025, those two roads will already be over capacity without the Imperial CPA or Imperial District traffic. And this is the Imperial District traffic, right here in this last column. Now, just think about that adding on to an overcapacity condition. So let me just sum up by saying that there are no capacity improvements planned in the 2045 model. Two lanes on Benita Grand Drive and two lanes on Terry Street is all that there will be in 2045 under the current plan. There's no plan to improve those. So you'll be dealing with these overcapacity conditions beyond 2045. So it's our opinion that the network in this area is insufficient to support any additional growth in those areas. And this was intentional, as my understanding was, was that it was the city's desire, and communicated that to the MPO, to remove any improvements on those two links for the future model and for the future plan. And the reason was because the city felt that it was not in the city's interest at this time to continue development growth in the DRGR. So it's consistent with the plan, and approving the Imperial District plan would be counter to what that intent was. The focus of the transportation funding for this area should remain with Benita Beach Road, Old 41, and Terry Street west of Old 41. Now, next up, environmental. Laura? Mike, sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Before getting into environmental, one of the things that the applicant was very upfront about, and we as staff appreciated, is their openness to a potential developer's agreement to deal with some of these issues. And a developer's agreement is a popular way of handling certain issues. The city has done this before. In fact, there was one approved, I think, a few meetings ago with regards to the piece just next to City Hall. But it's, it's difficult to be content with that particular outcome right now when there's some disagreement on what the issues are. You know, how, how, how well can that developer's agreement be crafted if you're still at a point where you don't agree on what the issues are? Regarding environmental, oop, that's not environmental. There's environmental. Regarding environmental, we do have Laura Gibson here. She's our senior environmental specialist. If you have any additional questions, I'll just go over some of the environmental points of the project, such as the 60% open space, which is a good thing. Little unclear at this time how exactly that will be met, but I'm sure that can be worked through. You're only allowed to use lakes, for an example, as a certain percentage of your open space requirement, and as you saw on their proposed master concept plan, there's a lot of lakes, and it looks like that 25% threshold might be exceeded, but I'm sure that's something that staff and the applicant can work through. Florida-friendly landscaping, they do have language for that. That's already a requirement. Restoration of the wetland area, that is a good thing. They did provide a wetland, a wetland restoration plan as part of their zoning for how they would deal with that particular issue. Other aspects of the environmental text that was provided, such as best management practices for fertilizer and pesticides, that's another thing that's already required. Erosion control, again, required. Lake maintenance, already required. So it's good that those things are in there, but they are, they're already required in your code, so there's nothing... So there's nothing new or above and beyond in those particular areas that's being provided to you. It's still good that they're there, absolutely, but they're already required in your code. And with regards to the primary panther zone, you know, yes, it abuts panther zone, primary panther habitat on the north there. And there's been some discussion about the fence versus a spatial buffer. And again, you know, staff isn't particularly married to one way or the other. There is multiple ways that you deal with that. Using another example that the applicant had used, out in Sections 1 and 2, where you have Valencia, Seasons, and Benita National, that is in the urban fringe district. And there's actual policy language within that comprehensive plan, future land use policy with regards to buffer and structural setbacks because of the habitat that surrounds it. This application doesn't have buffer or structural setbacks contained within their particular language, just as an aside. And with regards to the fence versus the buffer, you know, like I said again, the staff perspective is, you know, we're not married one way or the other. This probably isn't the time to figure that particular item out. That could be done at the time of zoning or a time of development order. But there are still some concerns about a six-foot fence, which also would include barbed wire. That wasn't mentioned before, but that is what the Fish and Wildlife recommendation would be. Moving on to stormwater, I think we're all familiar with what happened out east after Hurricane Irma, which of course was a very big, heavy-duty storm and not necessarily the norm, so to speak. But all that really did was accentuate the existing stormwater and flooding issues that have occurred out there historically for years. And the goal should be to help alleviate some of that burden. And I think we're in agreeance on that perspective. Just to kind of give you an idea, that was an aerial shot that was taken, I think it was about a week or 10 days after Irma had passed through. And we just highlighted where the subject parcels and properties are there. Of course, you have Citrus Park to the west and the mine to the east. Some of the texts within the stormwater, or I'm sorry, some of the texts provided for stormwater, such as the one-and-a-half inches of water quality treatment, that's, again, that's another thing that's already required elsewhere. The additional storage for the half-inch runoff prior to discharge, utilizing detention areas, interconnected lakes to hold water, the fact that the system is burned from surrounding development, so the system's going to be able to hold its own water, no real issues with that overall. And it is part of the overall Citrus Park stormwater management system, which includes Citrus Park Mobile Home Park, Bell Villa, this project, and then the agricultural piece that's between this project that isn't included in this application. And the reduction in discharge rates by up to 80%, we're not disputing that. That's obviously a positive thing for the area in that particular regard. And with regards to the 150-foot-wide drainage conveyance that they are proposing on the east and south side, yes, that could absolutely serve as a benefit in the future in terms of its ability to take on additional stormwater. It's still a question mark on how that piece could potentially be used. In their stormwater report, they suggest turning it over to the city. The city has not made a recommendation one way or another based on that particular request. One of the things that sort of stood out to us in the stormwater report that was provided by the applicant was that they'd be willing to go ahead and construct this conveyance, but that it would not be part of their stormwater system or the overall Citrus Park stormwater system. So it's just kind of hanging out there on its own. So just wanted to bring that to your attention in that regard. But overall, you know, we don't dispute their ability to engineer a site that's able to hold its own stormwater and treat its own stormwater. So overall, the staff opinion is that, you know, this project does represent a significant departure from the existing DRGR policies. And this really does come down to a policy decision to be made by city council. With recommendations and input from staff, the LPA, the applicant, you have a lot to consider. You know, it is possible that you'll begin to see additional proposals in the future with regards to development in the DRGR, which is why the staff report does suggest, you know, perhaps a discussion could be had about future policy decisions for the DRGR, or you simply reaffirm what you already have, which is something that has been done in the past. You know, so those are essentially the options as we see them, is to reaffirm the existing policies or potentially explore a policy update. But until those conversations are had and until those decisions take place, the staff perspective is that this project is just far too significant of a change, given what the current policy language suggests. So with that, we're open to any questions or comments you may have. We do have all of staff here. If you don't have anything directly, I would turn it over to Mr. Theoryak to make a few comments.
Mr. Chairman, council members. I'm David Theoryak, your Special Land Use Council. I don't have a position in regards to the policy decision before you, but I do have some facts that I would like to share with you that I believe were inaccurately presented to you. So let me begin by giving you a little bit of background. One document that I gave you is from Morris Depew. It's a Benita Grande Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And I was just giving this to give you background information on how we ended up in litigation and what the result was. The BG Mine property was 1,267 acres. And they were seeking, if you turn to Page 2, right above proposal requests, they were seeking in a plan amendment, a density of 1.5 to 3 dwelling units per gross acre. And at the top of Page 11, you'll see that the proposed amendment would allow a maximum of 2,535 units. So they were seeking a considerably higher amount than the 1 to 10 that the DRGR would allow. I also handed to you a settlement agreement. On the first page, you'll see six lawsuits. One of those was an appeal. The city entered into this settlement agreement with five lawsuits pending against the city. The crux of the lawsuits was an effort to de-annex the BG Mine property from the city and return it to the county. And then the county would be able to determine what density they wanted on the BG Mine property. And there was an annexation agreement at issue. You don't have either of those factors before you today. And you heard a great deal about how the BG Mine settlement established precedent. And if you could turn to Page 8, Section 19, you'll see a heading, "Purpose of This Agreement: Not Establishing Precedent." If you turn the page to Page 9, at the bottom of that section, "The Acceptance of Proposals for Purposes of This Agreement Is Part of a Mediated Settlement Affecting Many Factual and Legal Issues and is Not an Endorsement of and Does Not Establish Precedent For the Use of These Proposals in Any Other Circumstances." So the fact that you all allowed density greater than the 1 to 10 on the BG Mine property did not establish precedent for any other property in the DRGR area. And that's in black and white in the settlement agreement. I also handed you a mediated settlement agreement. This was Exhibit B to our settlement agreement. One of the significant portions of the settlement agreement, you'll see in Line 1, "BG Mine Agrees to Transfer Title to the City Acreage from the Property Known as BG Mine to Include Use of the Entire Northernmost Lake Pursuant to a Mutually Agreeable Joint Use Agreement and is Generally Depicted on the Attached Exhibit A for the Purposes of Public Recreation." The last sentence states, "The Upland Acreage will be determined as sufficient to accommodate a regional public park consistent with the upland areas." That was a significant component of our settlement discussions, was obtaining the regional public park and the northern lake and the uplands in BG Mine. I've also provided you with an affidavit of John Dolmer. You heard during the applicant's presentation several times references to the RALL report, the DeLeese report, the Baraco report. The same argument was made in BG Mine. And rather than calling John Dolmer as a witness so he could move things along, we actually filed an affidavit of John Dolmer in the BG Mine case to address those reports. You'll see Paragraph 3 addresses the RALL report. And it says, "In July 2015, Greg F. RALL, PG, RM Edenfield, PE, and Paul Seibert, AICP, presented a document entitled Engineering Analysis for Properties Designated Within the City of Benita Springs as Density Reduction Groundwater Resource DRGR." And we call that the RALL report. The RALL report is stamped "Draft." The City Council for Benita Springs, Florida did not accept or adopt the draft RALL report. So it was a draft, it was not a final version, and it was not accepted by the city council. Paragraph 4, "In May 2009, DeLeese Fitzgerald, Inc., prepared a document entitled Benita Springs Density Reduction: Groundwater Resource Land Use Study." That's the DeLeese study. The DeLeese study states that it is a final draft. The city council did not accept or adopt the draft DeLeese study. Once again, not a final report. Once again, not accepted by the city council. In Paragraph 5, "In August 2013, Baraco and Associates, Inc., and three other consulting firms prepared a document entitled The Northeast Quadrant Land Use Plan, Baraco Report." The city did not accept or adopt the Baraco report. And then in Paragraph 7, I want to read 7 into the record, and because some of you were not involved in the BG Mine negotiation, I think it's important for the public and the council to hear Paragraph 7. It states, and this was from John Dolmer, who is your Community Development Director, "The RALL report, the DeLeese study, and the Baraco report failed to address the planning analysis that must be performed when determining the appropriate future land use map designation to be assigned to BG Mine LLC's property that is a subject of the above styled case. The RALL report, the DeLeese study, and the Baraco report generally evaluated alternative land uses and scenarios on lands designated as DRGR, including the property, rather than how such lands should be developed from a planning perspective. While non-land use scenarios were sporadically addressed in two of the studies, it was not the intent or focus of either. The RALL report and the Baraco report did provide some environmental and preservation analysis, however, both were generally framed in either a financial scheme or an attempt to balance additional land uses. A planning analysis would require the suitability of the property for a particular future land use map designation to be based upon such factors as the character of the surrounding and nearby uses, environmental resources on and near the property, and the availability of public facilities such as sewer and water to serve development of the property." So in sum, what 7 is essentially stating is there is a planning component, not just an engineering component, when determining what's the appropriate land use designation for a particular piece of property. And the RALL report and the DeLeese study and the Baraco report lack the planning component to determine the suitability of a particular piece of property in the DRGR. And then the last thing I wanted to reference is there was mention to an opinion letter that I provided on January 17, 2017, to Audrey Vance, the former city attorney. I was asked to look at some proposed comprehensive plan language for an amendment. And on Page 2, the two sentences to me that are the key, I stated that the proposed DRGR Comprehensive Plan Amendment essentially states that the city has completed studies and has determined that the uses set forth in Policy 1121 are appropriate. The city's planning staff has informed me, however, that none of the studies determine that the uses set forth in Policy 1.1.21 are appropriate. Therefore, it would be inappropriate to have that sentence in a plan amendment. And I would also note, at that time, we had just, I had just got involved in the BG Mine litigation, and I wasn't familiar with the fact that the city council had not even accepted or adopted the studies, which is a second ground for why it would not have been appropriate to adopt that plan language. So thank you. I just wanted to bring that factual background to your attention, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, David. City Attorney.
At this time, I would recommend opening up to public comment. Each speaker will have four minutes to speak on the proposal afterwards. Counsel, even though it is not customary for a legislative decision, if you would like to grant maybe five minutes to the applicant to rebut anything that staff or the public has, that may be appropriate because this is a fairly complicated project. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Rick Wilkins, mayor, council, staff. This is a serious and very complicated matter, and I really appreciate the effort of staff to deal with this in a very objective manner that's, I think, in the best benefit and interest of the community. I also respect the work of the developers to try to improve the situation in development. Makes sense that we look at that kind of stuff in the future, and we should do what we can to improve our environment. I don't understand, after we've went through Irma, the tropical storms, the rain, the runoff, the pollution at our Gulf, the red tide, why we want to trade 300 acres of DRGR for 20 acres of filtering water. I think we really need to control the amount of water we have here where it goes. The DRGR was set up for a reason. I think we need to continue to support that, and I would appreciate the council's service consideration of doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Charlie Strater, Benita Springs, regarding the DRGR potential comprehensive plan change. Well, this is certainly deja vu for many of us here. I certainly agree with the staff, community developments, decision, or recommendation to deny the requested motion. I hope you will also reaffirm the values of our DRGR lands, which are even more valid today, especially after the last few years of toxic blue-green algae and persistent red tide blooms along with flooding events. Pollution of our waters is a death by a thousand cuts, and open lands are very important for water quality and control. Your vote today will have an effect on our environment, which is directly tied to our economy. This project is not a step down in density. This proposed project will increase density over 2,000%. Let me repeat, going from, on the 328 acres, going from 33, I gave them an extra house, would increase the residential density over 2,000% plus add commercial uses out into the DRGR. No matter how professionally this proposal is presented to you, this is not smart growth. We all know sprawl when we see it. The question is, do we look the other way for the financial benefit of private developers? We often hear we don't want to be wall-to-wall development like the other coast. We shall see. Too bad the other side of pro-development rarely has equal time and resources to counter such proposals. And think city staff are bringing up that the previous studies were purposely not accepted by the city. Despite the quality and quantity of the engineering done and the rhetoric, this project in the DRGR is not good for the long-term health of the city or our waters. Firstly, what do you think will cost more for the city in services and road improvements? Farmland, 33 homes, or 700 houses? Studies consistently show that this type of residential development does not pay for itself regarding the tax base. They come with infrastructure costs that will fall to the taxpayers. Impact fees only go so far. Cost of services? Studies show Florida taxpayers pay $1.39 to $2.45 for every single dollar paid by such development. development. Cost are even higher on the high end of this range for developments in rural areas. Many studies show that farmland, open areas, and ranch-style low-density residential are more cost-effective for cities. Second, the 700 homes and the associated impervious surface, along with cars and fertilized grass yards, will add pollution, including nutrient loading. Best management practices do not remove 100 percent, especially of the nitrogen and phosphorus. Plus, these subdivisions use herbicides, pesticides, fungicides, and cars produce heavy metals and households produce other harmful chemicals. The remaining percentages not removed will add to our TMDL issues and contribute to the degradation of the Imperial River and Estero Bay. This is just reality. It will remove the opport, excuse me, one small point on wet retention ponds, one of my favorites, which is the current design best management practices. They're going to create polluted little ponds that require forever maintenance and will occasionally overflow. Simply put, would you eat a fish from one of the proposed retention ponds? If not, why put them in your watershed? Number three, it will remove the opportunity for the current agricultural and open lands to be used for water control and water quality treatment. Except for virgin forests, such vacant land is the easiest and cheapest to restore and use for conservation. That's why I constantly think we need to be more progressive in looking at other options. If the owners of the properties want to make more money, good for them, everybody does. Maybe we should be looking at things like public purchase for land conservation, TDR programs, et cetera, to accommodate that. Number four, according to Google's calculator, their traffic study shows a percentage increase in trips 2,622 percent over the current restriction of 33 homes. What will negatively, excuse me, what will negatively affect our traffic issues and future road costs more? Current farmland, potential 33 homes, or 700 homes, plus five acres of commercial?
Sir, your time is running up. If you could wrap up.
I'll try to be as quick as I can. Again, Mayor, if you would indulge me, I'm almost done.
Let him talk. I'm not going to, freedom of speech in this country.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's equal time, that's the way I see it. Thank you, Mayor. I do also want to remind people, if you drove out there during the hurricane, those roads flood. They don't necessarily even go down to one lane, they go to no lane, unless you're in a big truck. This gated subdivision boasts 60 percent open area on its 328 acres. Well, first off, most all is not open to the public. But that means the remaining 40 percent, or 130 acres, may be mostly impervious surfaces and private yards. This is not what's called an LID, or Low-Impact Development, by today's suburban standards, Just because the majority of the DRGR is already developed, how does that justify adding more? Six, it does not help with our affordable housing issues, nor downtown revitalization. Seven, and most insidious in my mind, it will set a precedent for the remaining DRGR regarding increase in density and adding commercial uses. The Imperial District proposal ignores the overall value of the DRGR, endangers our waters, and adds to our tax burdens. Maybe, excuse me, maybe this is simply a question of what population can we afford in infrastructure cost and what can our environment support ecologically? Remember, we are still projected to grow in population and not yet built out. We do not have homeland democracy whereby residents get to vote on comprehensive plan changes, so we have to trust in you to do what is best for the environment and what the majority of our current residents want. However, I am concerned, because it seems like you mostly only hear from the pro-development side, wrapping up. Given all we've learned about our water woes, I am surprised we are at this inflection point. However, I do not blame or fault developers for wanting to make money, but you are not obligated to accept such proposals. They knew the DRGR goals and restrictions. People like to say our city is environmentally friendly. What will be this council's legacy? Don't feel threatened or afraid to do what is best for all, not just what is best for a select few. In conclusion, it's not too late to stop this piecemeal sprawl. Please do not make this comp plan change and establish a precedent for our DRGR. And may we all have a clean conscience tomorrow for Earth Day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, my name is John Pano, for the record. I own a business in Old Downtown called CGT Kayaks, and I also am a resident here in Bonita Springs. I have to agree with what Charlie just said, and I'd like to add a few points of my own. If you look back, I saw a picture from 2017. In September that year, I spent a good portion of my time paddling through people's backyards, houses, and helping them move their things from Hurricane Irma. But it wasn't just Hurricane Irma. If you remember, just before Hurricane Irma, we got hit with 19 inches of rain that caused flooding along the Imperial River before the hurricane even hit. Flooding is a major issue for us in Bonita Springs. I-75 cut off the Estero River, Spring Creek, Gold Creek, many other excesses for water to drain out into the bay. And in doing that, it left the Imperial River as one of the only drainage points. And we get millions of gallons of sheet flow in major events. The DRGR is vital to hold and store that water, as we learned in Hurricane Irma, and we saw Dean Street flooded and all those areas flooded. If we take what is essentially a 328-acre filter marsh now and convert it into a 20-acre filter marsh, I don't see where that's to our advantage. Quite frankly, we don't want people interacting with animals. We shouldn't be building right in the middle of their territory. So, again, like Charlie says, I don't want to see developers stop, but I would like to see them encouraged to develop property within the city, that benefits within the city, and not in vital flood-prone areas like the DRGR. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. That's quite a struggle.
It is, it is. For the record, my name is Megan Harris. I'm the CEO of Bonita Springs Estero Realtors, and I'm here representing our board of directors and the 1,200 Realtor members that serve the residents of Bonita Springs and Estero. With the influx of the COVID pandemic, we have seen people coming here in the masses, which is now resulting in record-low inventory. In Bonita Springs and Estero, right now, we only have 200 homes for sale, and for that reason, you might think that I'm here today to be for this. However, I am not. As Realtors, we advocate for water quality, land preservation and conservation areas, affordable housing, and what's best for homeowners, as well as smart growth. And what's been presented here today does not speak to any of those things. So, for the record, the Bonita Springs Estero Realtors are against this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, for the record, I'm Linda Schwartz. I've been a full-time resident of Bonita Springs for 20 years. I was one of the founders of Be Safe Bonita. I'm former president of the Cedar Creek Property Owners Association, and currently a member of the local planning agency. I am the sole member of LPA who voted against this proposal, and I would like to explain my reasons for doing so. First of all, the mine development approval was the result of a lawsuit. The council really had no option other than to settle, so it should not be considered a precedent. I respectfully disagree with the cited studies, which they implied invited future development. I've read those studies, I attended all the Water Management Task Force meetings, and I think those studies were just presenting a picture of what was the current state as well as the history. Also, this proposed development is not consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, that's the main objective. Approval of this project will open the floodgates to more development, and community development staff will be deluged with applications. If you approve this, other communities will be close behind, and at some point, East Terry would have to be widened. It's currently considered a D-minus road, and improvements would cost about $80 million, according to the engineers I've spoken with. It would take decades to recoup that cost through impact and development fees. Finally, development means more impervious surface areas so water cannot be absorbed into the ground. One of the studies not cited by the developers is that of Jim Beaver, who reported after Irma that the DRGR was doing what it was designed to do, that is retain water. Aerial photographs show that it held about a foot of water for at least a week, in some areas, more than a week. So I'm requesting that City Council needs to affirm their duty to protect the current residents of Bonita Springs by declining this proposal. I also want to mention that I have some comments from Carolyn and David Gallagher that have been distributed to the City Council members. Carolyn Gallagher was a member of the LPA from 2013 through 2019, and she was actually head of the LPA until she left in 2019. David Gallagher was a member of the Citizens Water Management Task Force, and they both strongly encourage you to decline this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
My name is Bruce Galloway. I'm a resident of Bonita Springs, and in a past life, I was actually an urban planner. As a former urban planner, I'm very interested in process, which we haven't heard too much about today. The process that we're going through right now is as convoluted a process as I've ever seen in planning. This is a rezoning request, plain and simple, that's all it is. But the way we get there is first, we change our comprehensive plan to create a new zoning district. Second, we write the regulations for the new district, the new zone, and then we float the zone and regulations over the city to land on a specific piece of property. When I worked in planning, this was called spot zoning, and was illegal because it bypassed the checks and balances of comprehensive planning and zoning. That's the process, comprehensive planning and zoning. This morning and this afternoon, we've heard an awful lot about a housing development that's been proposed. We have heard very, very little about the real issue facing us today, and that is the integrity of our comprehensive plan. I was planning on taking you through what a comprehensive plan is, what the legal basis of it is, what it means, what the state requires us to do as planners when we prepare one, and requires you all to pay attention to when you approve or disapprove one. Not going to do that. Our plan was not done overnight. Plans take years to put together. They're expensive, time-consuming, detailed, boring, but they hold a kernel of truth for everybody, which is the vision of Bonita Springs. One of the categories that our plan created was the DRGR. It's still there, we still have the zoning district, we have an applicant that is proposing to amend the plan, which means change our constitution, which is our comprehensive plan, to change that. If you allow this approach, the approach that we're going through right now, to rezoning pieces of land, I guarantee you that we will be nibbled to death by ducks. These will pop up monthly, if not weekly. This is not the way to rezone. Please respect our comprehensive plan. It represents a profound and good vision for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, for the record, my name is Barbara Ogle, and I agree with Charlie. It is deja vu all over again. This T-shirt is probably from 2013 to 2016, and I got so tired of my husband wearing it that I hid it. But when this came up, I decided to dig it out and bring it to you today. The request to allow 700 homes on land currently zoned for 20, or 32 or 33, needs to be denied. The density reduction groundwater resource land, the DRGR, was created to protect our water and create a low-density rural area. Despite what you hear and what you saw today, no development on that land can guarantee that it won't degrade water quality. It certainly will create traffic problems, and therefore, will almost certainly not pay for the additional city services that those new homes will require. We respectfully request that you vote not to move forward with either of these items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Jude Richwell from Old Bonita, and I can't help but agree with everything that my predecessors set up to now, so I won't go into great detail. I do know one thing, we have a water crisis. It's serious and growing. Our aquifers are being depleted, our aquifers are getting more saline. This planned development is right on top of one of our aquifers. It's right near some of the BSU wells, which we get our drinking water from. Each and every one of you drinks that water, I think, unless you drink bottled water. There is no way to contain whatever pollution this new enterprise will create locally. It just cannot be done. Water will seep into the aquifer, water will seep into the headwaters of the river, go into the sea, and create more red tide. In this day when we have a water crisis, this is the last thing I think you want to do. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Now, good afternoon, Council. Dwight Estman, for the record, I'll be very brief. Just use your common sense. I can't believe that you can put a bunch of roofs and driveways and everything and not create more stormwater. You're obviously going to have more traffic. Changing the number of homes allowed in the DRGR simply puts money in the pockets of people, and I don't think it does anything to enhance the quality of life for the people who already live here. These people that own the land bought it when it was already DRGR, so they know what, they knew what they were buying. Thank you. Thank you.
How you doing? My name's Dennis Swan, the applicant, along with my wife, Tamara Swan, and our company, 3HWA, which stands for Three Hard Working Americans. Tamara and I have over 40 years of experience of running a development in Citrus Park. We sold it in 2019, so I know firsthand of everything that everyone has been talking about with traffic, water quality, and the DRGR. In fact, Mayor Steinheimer, I remember seeing you many times in the DRGR meetings over the last 15 years. Point for me speaking today, instead of all my professionals, which have done a great job, is the public aspect of it, because at the end of the day, whom I really, other than the guy just paying the bill? I do want to... I do want to bring up that it is currently an agricultural area. There's 100 head of cattle on it. It is not a marsh filter. It has agricultural hay, it has exemptions from any kind of pesticides, herbicides, that we would want to use on that. The alternative to not having 700 homes would be 32 10-acre estate homes that could all have pig farms, and there's no requirements on the water allocation or the water equality discharge. We were not doing this for our self-gain. We were doing this for the city of Benita. So if you're representing the city and saying the city does not want this, then so be it, but don't do it on false pretenses that this is a recharge area. I do know that it was stated that the raw report was not accepted, but it doesn't make the engineering untrue. The facts were still there, and I've seen it firsthand for being out there on that property for 16 years. I was an operations manager, I'm a general contractor, I'm a utility contractor, I have a real estate license, I have certified pile burn permits. So I know everything there is to do and work with the land, because I've been doing it and enjoying it for the last 15 years. The water does not percolate down. We are around a 1,280-acre Citrus Park water management system. Y'all have to think of it as like a giant bathtub, sitting in a big area of sheet flow. The sheet flow does not recognize those berms. It comes inside. From there, we are relying on pumps instead of gravity, so the pumps are what's discharging the water. Those rates are set by South Florida Water Management District. Over the years, I've been there since 2002, I have seen two and a half events of flooding. The half event was in 2008, when I seen the system completely maxed. It did not flood, but it was maxed. Harvey and Irma, I will agree with the others here, that absolutely did cause problems. But it was everything coming up from the north, sheet flow coming through, and all of us were suffering. It wasn't just us. We happened to be ahead of the game, because we'd already had pumps in place for Harvey. So without any help from city or anyone else, our community got ourselves back together faster than anyone else in the city of Benita. So there's a lot of other things to talk about. The four minutes kind of gets to me. Publicly, the other thing I'd have to say, the settlement agreement. It keeps being brought up that the settlement agreement was never intended to set a precedent. But publicly, as a neighbor of what's going on, we see that it set a precedent. Doesn't matter how many documents said that this is not supposed to set a precedent, it set it to us, to the point where we said, hey, this is a chance now to be able to get better water quality, better water retainage, and do something for our community. So it doesn't matter if the settlement agreement was stated several times that it's not supposed to set a precedent. It did. And we're trying to do this the right way. We're not trying to get it to be a settlement agreement, which means it's something after expensive litigation's been done. We're trying to do it beforehand, trying to come up with an agreement. I've also seen traffic. I've seen traffic be an issue for here long before we even submitted for Safira. And I think we all know the reasons for traffic. You can't just say, "Don't build it, and they won't come." I've seen personally, over the years of City Council, not taking the chance to utilize some state funds and things like that, to be able to add better roadways in our system, in that attempt that if you just kept it narrow, that you'd prevent the population from growing. It's grown, we are way behind. The question is, is what are we going to do about it today? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Kate Pagan. I'm a homeowner in Old Benita, also an environmental scientist, and I would like you to take the city's recommendation to not move forward with this project. We do know that the DRGR was established in 1989, I believe, with legislative officials who had the foresight to see what was going to happen to this region. And traveling all around Florida and all around the country, the development in some places is just rampant, and we need to get a hold on it. So I agree with most people who have come before me to move forward with encouraging development in downtown and some of the other regions, especially west of I-75, and do not go forward with allowing many more homes to be built in what is some of our only protected watershed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, great to see you, City Council. Martha Simons, for the record. You have a letter from Loretta Goldenberg, which she had sent to me, because she couldn't be here for health reasons, so she gave you her comments. I'm not going to read them to you. I have my own. But she asked that you please do not transmit this to DEO. Pretty much the same reasons that a lot of other people here have said that. Sorry, my husband's trying to call me. How dare he? Any... Sorry. So as you just heard from Kate Pagan, local environmental scientist with, I think, a master's degree or PhD or something, she mentioned the 1989 designation of the DRGR. That was by the county, that was before we were a city. But that was challenged in court many times, and it was upheld each time. So our original City Council, when they adopted our comp plan, they decided to... They could have changed that at that time, but they chose not to. Why? Because they saw in planning, you have transitional... You have transitional planning from our urban core, which is downtown, we want that to be a success. And our comp plan says development should be west of I-75 and infill development. That's primarily what you want to look at. So if we're going to have a successful downtown, which I think Gary Price told us this morning about how much we've invested down there, of tax dollars, our dollars, if we want that to be a success, then we have to put that development there. As far as DRGR goes, you know, you heard about getting the water right? We haven't done that yet. You know, that was the big 2013 Get the Water Right campaign, when the DRGR came up. Some of you ran on that to get into office, and I want you to remember that. Getting the water right in East Benita Springs is going to take a whole lot of effort. Putting development there isn't going to help it right now. And I want to also remind you that Three Hard Working Americans here, I'm sure everybody in this room's a hard-working American, but currently, they are allowed to develop there. They can put beautiful rural estates. Who wouldn't want to buy a 10-acre piece of property and have your mansion on it? I mean, that is kind of attractive, and there's not too many of them around here. So I would say, you know, somebody who's got the money who wants their piece in the sun, I wouldn't necessarily say it's going to be a pig farm. It could be like a nice, beautiful, you know, ranch. And I'm not against agriculture. I think agriculture's a great thing. It also should be near an urban core. Just think of the transportation. You want to get vegetables from here to there. It costs a lot of money. Food costs can be kept down if you keep your vegetables close to home. So I'm all for agriculture in East Benita, as long as we do it right. Something else is, I've had a hard time having my garbage picked up. I don't know if anybody else here in town is having a problem with that, but I'm not going to get into who the garbage company is, but they haven't created any new routes since we've added like 15,000 new homes in East Benita. If we can't get our essential services right now, why do we think we need to develop more and more until we get what we already have as a problem corrected? Getting our water right, getting our essential services under our belts. So you know all the other stuff, you've heard it from everybody else. I just want... And I also want to mention that your land use attorney, Mr. Theriak, is absolutely correct that this is oranges and apples. BG Mines is not a precedent, that was an annexation agreement settlement. I sat on City Council and commented about that. We had a five-to-seven vote on City Council in 2013, five-to-seven of the people on our City Council, and each time for the last 20 years has said, "The DRGR is important to Benita Springs. Preserve it." These people have rights there already, and they can use them. And I thank you, and I ask you to please deny transmitting this to DEO.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is John West. I have been a resident of Benita Springs for over 30 years. I am not a resident now, but I watch what's going on. Benita is still in my heart. I have read the proposal, and I have a few comments that I sent to you, and for the public, I'd like to mention some of these now. I attended every meeting except the last one of the Water Task Force in 2014. I was not a member of the task force, but I submitted some papers to them, which I hoped would help them to come to a decision as to what recommendations to make to Council eventually. These papers included information on septic tank, on groundwater, and on the impaired state of the Imperial River. The comprehensive plan is a document that you should not ignore. It is vital for you to bear in mind that it contains instructions concerning the health and welfare of all the citizens of Benita, including the retention of natural resources and preservation of them. During the... At the end of the meeting of the Water Task Force, one of the recommendations was that there should be a Benita Springs Well Field Protection Ordinance. That was one of the recommendations. And in 2015, Audrey Vance, the then-city attorney, prepared a Well Field Protection Ordinance, which was to replace that which was being used, which was actually Lee County Protection Ordinance. That ordinance that she prepared has never been submitted to Council. So at the moment, as far as I know, we are still working on Lee County Protection Ordinance, which is out of date. The purpose for a protection, a Well Field Protection Ordinance, is to protect future and existing public water supply wellfields, and protect water system recharge areas from potential pollutant point sources. We are still waiting for a Benita Springs Well Field Protection Ordinance to protect the aquifer in our city. Until such an ordinance is approved, submitted to and approved by Council, I cannot see how any change in the stature of the DRGR can be considered. I also, on this subject of water quality, the Imperial River was designated as Outstanding Waters of Florida, which means that you have to render to it certain special protections. Shortly after that, the river was condemned by the state of Florida as being impaired. It is still impaired. The latest information is that of the eight sampling stations in the freshwater area of, which is more or less from Old 41 out east, of those eight sampling stations, eight of them, all eight of them showed continuance of impairment. We have... Water is a scarce commodity. It was said that when the well is dry, we will know the value of water. That was a quotation from Benjamin Franklin a few years ago. I attended a meeting quite recently, virtually, actually, of Big Cypress Basin Board, and they had a presentation there about what's going on in the corkscrew swamp area just east of us. And they mentioned, there was mention made that in the year 1910, there were over 100,000 wading birds coming to nest there. That had reduced by 1970 to 12,000, in 1990 to 6,000. And now, of the last 10 years, nearly half, no wading birds came because of declining levels of water. Not only declining levels of water, but extending periods of dryness. This application is asking us to make some concessions. I haven't seen, actually, the deviations that they've asked for, but I understand there's 15 of them. There's also the question of the panther. Now, I wasn't sure whether the primary panther activity was on their property or on the property just to the north. So what were they doing with a fence there? I don't know, except that it was a recommendation by the Fish and Wildlife people. So I don't know if the panther uses that area or not, but to say that panthers only use forested area belies the fact that panthers are run over on our roads every year, and there was a panther killed on I-75. And there was a panther killed on I-75 very recently, in the last few weeks. Leave the panther alone, let it roam, we're restricting it enough. To put 55,000 square feet of commercial on their property, I think better use can be made of that. That will induce the appearance of heavy trucks bringing in supplies for, for whatever store comes there. And, you know, this area is about two miles from the nearest publics. If you go on Corkscrew Road, you'll find all the developments five miles or so east of the nearest publics. So if they can do it, why can't people who would live on this, this particular area not be satisfied with that? I don't see the point of it.
Excuse me, Mayor. Excuse me, Mayor. Point of order.
Yes, I'll be finished in a minute.
Excuse me, really, we have to move this along so that people who are here get a chance to talk and, you know.
You're well over six minutes.
Well over the four minutes by probably five times. So I think we need to round it up, wind it up. I find your comments.
I'm nearly finished.
I find your comments interesting, but you're way over our time.
I'm nearly finished.
Yes, go ahead, John.
Thank you.
Round it up.
The matter of water levels is very important. And it appears that it is so important that B S U have a program for increasing or expanding the reverse osmosis system that they have there, which means that they're going to have to go deeper and deeper into the aquifer to get some kind of water out of the system. And you should know, I presume, you know, maybe you don't know, read what's going on with Senate Bill 64, which is going to mandate that by the year nineteen, 2030, we're going to be having to have all our toilet water treated so that we can drink it. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good afternoon. My name's Tamara Swan and I am part of the applicant team. I'm not sure what good it will do. I have a lot to say, but I don't do well in public speaking. But I would like to provide a little bit of history. My uncle, Eric Joseph Trost, was the developer of Citrus Park. He purchased the community in the seven, late 70s, 77, 78, I believe. And the D R G R wasn't formed till, I believe, 89. And it pretty much happened overnight. From Tallahassee, it was mandated to Fort Myers to choose a plot of land that can be used for a density groundwater recharge. And guess what? My uncle was the lucky recipient of the D R G R. Been a part of a lot of task forces, read a lot of reports on the D R G R. And I challenge anyone to say what exactly it does and is, because I don't have that understanding. I've, I was here during Irma and Harvey. The flooding was caused already by Harvey. Three weeks before Irma, we were underwater. Citrus Park was underwater. I have a home in the D R G R, the only home on a 10-acre parcel, and have lived there for 11 years now. And never experienced anything that we went through during Harvey and Irma. But that wasn't solely caused by the storms. There were other underlying factors that still exist today. But I don't see anybody looking what caused it and what can we do better for it. We just keep doing all these studies, but nothing really comes of it. I think we have a serious misconception of the D R G R. If somebody has those answers, it would be great to make that public, because I'm listening to some of these comments. I don't want to do anything negative to the environment, but it's also not fair that the D R G R has been designated the way it has. I also want to say I've been a part of the Benita Springs community for over 30 years. In fact, Paul Pass, the first mayor of this great city. My hometown in Germany, Grünstadt, or close to it, is the sister city of Benita Springs. I don't know if you guys are aware of that, but together with Paul Pass, we, we had a little parade in Grünstadt, a little trivia. But I don't want to do anything that's going to affect the environment adversely. But we also have an opportunity here to do it right. Something's going to happen out there on this parcel of land and you have influence on what's going to happen in one form or another. As for the traffic, you know, Benita Springs should have done something 25 years ago, began with the traffic and the influx of people coming here. Everybody wants to be in southwest Florida, and I don't blame them. But we snoozed, we did, we should have done something 20, 25 years ago on traffic. Thank goodness for Livingston. I remember when the city came to me and said imminent domain for the 951 extension from Naples to Fort Myers. And some folks here today remember those meetings. But luckily Livingston happened. Else they would have clipped the, our farmland for imminent domain, for a road that's also in the D R G R. That's okay. So we have an opportunity to build forward in a very conscientious way. Something's going to happen, but in what form? That's up to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
I've had enough. I would give the applicant an opportunity to rebut any of the comments that were made, but only rebuttal.
I don't think so.
I'm sorry?
I don't think so. I don't think he, they had their presentation. I work for the public. Public had their presentation. Can we call end of this?
Mr. Mayor, may we entertain the applicant's?
What?
Could we please hear the applicant's rebuttal?
Five minutes, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor and Council.
Use your timer.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you very much for your time today. We're thoughtful of everyone's time. We're trying to be effective as we very much can be. I would really appreciate the opportunity for a brief rebuttal. Most of these items, we feel like we did cover in our presentation. But I feel like some of the information provided by staff does need to require a rebuttal. And I'm going to request that Ted Trish, if Ted, if you're online remotely still, our transportation engineer.
Are you the last person to speak? Do you think you're going to be the last person to speak today?
I am going to have myself and my attorney speak today, correct. And my Ted Trish, our transportation engineer, I want him to have a few moments as well because of some of the factual requirements that Mr. Ross provided.
I'm supposed to run this meeting and I don't approve of what you want to do. You had your opportunity. You've been here for three hours, four hours, whatever it is. I think we're done.
Derek?
I just put it up to a vote of the council if they want to give the opportunity to rebut.
I'll make a motion to allow the rebuttal.
Second.
I require that the rebuttal is from one person for five minutes.
Is that acceptable to the motion maker?
Can you read me the motion again?
The motion, the motion at this time is to allow rebuttal by one, one member of the applicant team for five minutes.
Any other comments?
Well, is that okay with the person who proposed? Somebody, the person you proposed?
Are you talking?
I would just say that I, you know, as much as I'm, I understand three or four hours, I'm with you on this, it's been a long time. I think we put ourselves in a bad spot if we don't allow them to rebut. And I already have a stenographer here, so I think we should probably give that to them. It doesn't change, look, it's, I'm not saying they're going to change your mind in five minutes. I'm saying we're putting ourselves in a bad spot by not allowing them to reply, probably, in my opinion.
I can't, I can't hear you. But anyways, there's a motion on the floor. There's a second on it.
It was.
There was a second.
No, you changed it. I didn't second your change, because I want to hear.
You have an opportunity.
Second.
We call for a vote. Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes? Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Motion passed, so, attorney.
Ms. Specter?
Just to clarify, the motion that was approved was for one speaker?
One speaker for five minutes.
So there's, there is two, so that's the five.
All right, I'm going to read Mr. Trish's remarks. I haven't had a chance, opportunity to look at them, but. "The analysis presented by Mr. Ross is in agreement with the analysis we submitted. There are failing links as stated. The city removed two links, East Terry and Benita Grand Drive, from the 2040 plan to be widened. If they are critical links, as stated by Mr. Ross, why were they removed? State statutes allows development to proceed through a proportionate share agreement if needed. To remove roadway links from the long-range transportation plan to specifically limit future growth isn't permitted by the Florida statutes. The city, as part of the MPO, had plenty of input in the 2045 plan. If it had questions, there were opportunity, plenty of opportunities to address them. We don't get to choose what model to use. The city staff had no questions on the methodology until today." And I would mention to add on to that, that in staff's presentation, they, they picked and chose what they wanted to talk about with regard to the zoning and what is appropriate to speak about today and what's appropriate to speak about at zoning. We, in our application, demonstrated that we were in compliance and staff did agree with us, that we showed what we needed to show to pass the Comprehensive Plan stage with regard to transportation. We do not impact the transportation system based on the 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan. The analysis stops there with regard to the Comprehensive Plan. As we had up there earlier, which I was going to call up, but we don't have time, the statute specifically states that you must allow us to enter into a development agreement to address any traffic impacts. You're not giving that, that us, us that opportunity if you don't allow us to pass this stage. At this stage, we're kind of, again, it's been used a lot of times, mixing apples and oranges. We're only asking you to transmit this to the state today for comment. You're not approving the amendment. You're not approving the project. You're simply giving it to the state, it will come back to you to consider again. And we ask for that opportunity to allow you to get comments from the state for their comments, their, their remarks. Also, I did want to speak with regard to precedent. We've spoken a lot about precedent today. Not only do we have the Benita Grand Mine, which, as has been stated by the Swans, absolutely sets a precedent, regardless of what a private settlement agreement provides. But as Mr. Van Ness had mentioned, we have out east, that property was all annexed, and when it was annexed, it was D R G R. The Benita Springs City Council agreed to change that from the D R G R to allow a higher density than we're asking for today. We're asking for 2.1. The city council approved 2.77 dwelling units per acre out east. And as Patrick mentioned, that, those developments more than handled any stormwater that came in during those historical events. And speaking to the studies, you know, I wanted to read Policy 1.7.2. It specifically says, "Upon completion of the study referred to in Policy 1.7.1, the city shall amend its Comprehensive Plan to identify the uses considered most appropriate in the D R G R and the resource protection measures and practices necessary to ensure its continued viability." To say that the council has set policy by inaction is not action. It's not setting policy. Setting policy is doing what the Comprehensive Plan says and amending the Comprehensive Plan to identify those uses. We're asking you to do that today. Speaking of the studies, Mr. Theriak had mentioned that in reading Mr. Dolmer's affidavit, that it was an engineering-based, they were all engineering-based studies with no planning analysis. I have two points to that. First of all, the DeLisi study. Dan DeLisi had, is an AICP planner who participated in preparation of the DeLisi report. Greg Stewart is an AICP planner who participated in the preparation of the Baraco report. So there was a planning analysis. The planning analysis was the appropriate uses within the D R G R. When you get to the individual properties, that's our responsibility to show you that the uses are appropriate. As with the Benita Grand Mine, when they showed you that their uses were appropriate, we're showing you that our uses were appropriate. So to say that it's not appropriate, those studies are not showing you what they need to show you to make a planning analysis, to make a planning decision, is inaccurate. And with that, I'm going to conclude, because I don't know how much more time I have, but I think I've covered most everything.
Thank you.
I'm sorry? Oh, I'm, thank you very much.
At this time, if the council has any questions for the applicant, for staff, you're done with the public hearing process, you can move forward to the motion.
I have a question. What's the pros and cons to a developer's agreement? From your perspective, because I'll ask the staff as well, but, because I don't know what it entails, so.
Well, from, from the city's perspective, a developer's agreement assures certain criteria that are within that agreement to be accommodated for. As an example, in the developer's agreement that was procured during the Benita Beach Road Section 1 and 2 project, there were certain criteria, not only for buffering, for lighting, for road improvements, all kinds of other things that could be included in that. And that requires not only the developer and the city, and there's also a reporting requirement that had to occur as well. So that actually memorializes an opportunity for negotiation and move forward. It also is, as Sarah mentioned, pursuant to Florida statutes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? The developer plan is not on the table today, right?
No, sir.
At this point, at this point, the only thing that the council's deciding on is whether to transmit the proposed amendments to the state. They would then come back with state comments for adoption by the council if they decide to move forward.
I'd like to see it go to the state. See what they say. So I make a motion that we transmit.
I'm making a motion, we don't forward this to the state.
Absent a second, I make a motion that we deny the transmittal to the state of this application.
Any other comments?
Well, I do. I'd like to discuss it now. I mean, so that you guys don't want...
There's a motion on the floor.
And there's no discussion?
No, there's discussion on the motion.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. Staff, throughout the report, agree, agree, don't disagree, concur. There's no disagreement, yet at the very end, there's a denial. Okay, so I do believe that the DRGR, and I know people are going to be all upset, is, in people's minds, like a non-developed designated property. And I don't believe that's the case. And honestly, this project almost sounds like it would help the water situation when we have another Irma, that it would process the stormwater more efficiently than it's being done now, that it would clean it, that we would get our wetlands restored. I mean, there's so many positive things about what is possible here that are we saying, "Don't do anything with the DRGR"? It's not actually working, is it? Everybody is saying, "Well, look at all the water we had out here." So I'm saying, these guys might have figured out a way to move the water, and the traffic and the density definitely concerned about, but maybe the state would say, "It works if you just lower the density and, you know what? We're going to put you on a priority list with the MOP." Who knows? But to me, denying this is crazy. The staff agreed with everything and then denied it, so...
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, Amy, please. Ladies first.
No, it doesn't matter. You had your hand up first. Go ahead.
All right. As far as turning it over to the state, I'm... Right now, I'm a no. But before I even get into the bad side, I want to get into some of the good side, because I feel like we've pooped with them quite a bit. I was one of the counselors who met with them. I'll meet with any developer who wants to develop in the city of Benita Springs, because, quite frankly, I think it's our duty to try to put the city in the most advantageous positions possible. Furthermore, I'm a very staunch advocate of private property rights. If this project was somewhere else in the city, I don't really see much problem with it at all, quite frankly. They put in a lot of things in there into the plan, if you looked at the details, to try and help mitigate what they're building. But the problem with that is, that doesn't make it better than not building there. There's no scenario whereby you go from 35 to 700, and miraculously, the water situation that we have is better. That's not a... That's not even a sensical way to view it. Putting the transportation stuff and the environmental components in there, it, to me, it seems very irresponsible for us to think that we should move forward, because, quite frankly, okay, the studies were drafts. They weren't final. Okay, so using that as the basis, to me, is inappropriate. Second of all, more flooding and... We're in a situation now where we... Like, we have 40% of our water is coming out of the DRGR. And you can say it's, you know, there's nothing special there. It's a marshland. Whatever you want to say about it, but you have to understand the purpose of the DRGR. That marshland serves a purpose. The harmful nitrates that are coming out of Lake O... Lake O, right now, as you know, and I've said this at the last meeting, is 2.6 feet higher than it's been in the last two and a half years. Fresh water releases are headed our way. 2018, we got smoked with them, and they are going to come back. It's the number-one strategic priority for us as a city is water quality. So now we have a situation where we could have 35 homes or we could have 700 homes. I remember the DRG mines case very, very well, because even though Mayor Simmons was able to get it from, you know, the situation was, we were going to get 1,700 homes or we were going to get 700. And the county was going to get the impac fees or we were going to get the impac fees. But there was no other option where it wasn't going to happen. So I hate to keep using the apples-to-apples. This isn't apples-to-apples, because we aren't in a situation where we're at the end of a lawsuit. We took 700. We took it on the chin, and we weren't happy. So to double what we have out there, I like the fact that they incorporated the environmental stuff. I like the economic components to it, but at what price? To me, there's nothing more important to us as elected officials of the city than ensuring that our water quality, per our charter, our number-one issue, is appropriately taken care of. And I feel like, being where we're at right now, we have a situation of 35 or 700. We can go back and forth on charts. We can go back and forth on all of the other things. But at the end of the day, you're never going to give me an argument where you're going to say, "700 homes, 35 homes." And if they had the zoning, I'm not going to tell them no. If a developer comes and sees me and they say, if they're within their appropriate entitlements, as if they go above and beyond in their environmental mitigation, if they do all the things that they're supposed to do, it's not our job to tell them no because we don't like it. That's not how it works. However, that's not the situation here. They're allowed to build their 35 homes. What they're asking for is for us to change that. And though they say it isn't precedent, I believe that Page 8, Section 19 of the settlement agreement spells out quite clearly that it is not precedent-setting. And if the argument that is, "Well, in a public mindset, it was precedent-setting," then by approving this, we're furthering that narrative. So again, for a multitude of reasons, from the economic side, from the environmental side, from the transportation side, I feel that this is unfortunately a good project in the wrong place. So I'm a no.
Amy?
I think I look at this a little bit differently. I mean, I agree with what you said, Jesse, but this is... I see this as a significant departure from existing DRGR policies, which have been reiterated recently in our evaluation and appraisal report, which we just did. We're just about a year ago. We had a lot of public input on that process. That's part of our planning process. That's part of a thing, a process by which we could review our comprehensive plan. And there was no impetus for us to change our current policy or the wording that we had within the DRGR. In fact, the people that came out said, "Keep doing what you're doing." And I believe that I have an issue with having these small portions of development requests for changes in the comprehensive plan, because I believe with the planner that came up and spoke and said that we have to work to preserve the integrity of our comprehensive plan. If we change our comprehensive plan in spot areas, we don't have the total picture in our planning. So I'm against that. I am persuaded by some of the commentary that came out of the staff reports in regard to transportation, density, flooding, but that's somewhat irrelevant to the issue. This is a legislative issue on policy that the council, time and time again, has supported. Density reduction, that's what it means. One unit per 10 acres.
Can I call a question on this?
And just one more thing. We have strategic priorities that we have articulated. We do it every year. And our current strategic objective is to focus on downtown development. And the second strategic, another strategic objective was to protect the DRGR. So that's what we told the people when we started. We should at least carry it forward for another year. So I'm... That's why I'm voting no on this.
Anybody else? Roll call, please. Now wait a minute. Mayor... Mayor. City attorney, what are we voting on again? What are we voting?
You're ready to vote.
Voting to deny?
To deny.
The motion that's on that got a second was to deny.
Okay, roll call.
Councilwoman Carr? I'm in favor, and I actually think it would...
It's yes or no, dear.
Not your dear. So...
No. If you want to vote, if you don't agree with it, you say nay. If you agree with it, you say aye. Is that so hard to understand?
Oh, no. Please, explain it to me again.
The conversation's over, was...
I am opposed to not going ahead with the project and sending it to the state.
Okay, city clerk?
That's nay. Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Oh, my God. That is so painful.
Okay. Thanks, folks.
Would you like to take a break before you move on to the rest of the agenda?
Yeah, let's take a break. Call this meeting back into order. Okay, number nine. Number nine, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept?
Submoved.
Second.
Motion and second? Any comment about the consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Mayor Steinmeier?
Mayor Steinmeier?
Yes.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Okay, do we have any comments about what we just passed? Okay, I guess we move on now. Okay, attend to my messengers, Jesse. Fourth of July, hey!
Now, next is the proclamations and presentations. So the first one is the financial...
Yeah, we moved it around a little bit.
Where are we facing?
We'll face this way.
If you want to stand up front there, too.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, come on over. If you can scoot on over this way. So before we get into the presentation, I just wanted to take this opportunity to let council know that I know that y'all don't love when I... When things go in last minute. With this one, you know, the Realtors reached out to me yesterday. Megan's the CEO of the Realtors. She just spoke on the last event. For the next meeting, it wouldn't have been appropriate, because April is the month. So due to the time sensitivity, I put in the addendum. But just know, it did give me heartburn to put it in. I know where we stand on that. So if it weren't for the time sensitivity, it wouldn't be here. But with that being said, I would like to read this proclamation to you, Megan, on behalf of the city, and it is signed by our mayor, Rick Steinmeier. This is a proclamation recognizing April 20... I'm sorry. This is a proclamation recognizing April 2021 as Fair Housing Month, whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted April 11, 1968, enshrined into federal law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States, and whereas the act provides equal housing opportunity for all Americans, regardless of race, color, sex, or national origin, as well as to ensure fair practices in the sale or rental and financing of properties. And whereas the Fair Housing Amendments Act seeks to provide equal housing opportunities to affirmatively further housing choices to eliminate legal barriers to equal housing and to emphasize equal housing as a fundamental right for all, whereas individuals in the city of Benita Springs have the right to choose where to live without discrimination based on race, color, religion, age, sex, disability, gender identity, familial status, or national origin, and whereas the city of Benita Springs fully supports the intent and purpose of this federal Fair Housing Act, local fair housing laws, and policies and practices in order to achieve these goals. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Benita Springs City Council, in partnership with Benita Springs Astero Realtors, does hereby declare the month of April 2021 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Benita Springs.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jesse.
Well, I thank you for the last-minute addition to our agenda. It's very important to us, current political climate with city equity and inclusion, that we make this proclamation to the residents of Benita Springs to let them know where we stand. And so, on behalf of the Realtor Association, thank you very much for making us part of today.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, get some pictures.
Sure.
Do you want to scoot in the middle?
Here, stand in front of my scooter. How about that?
We'll block this.
Tooter. Thank you, Jessica.
All right. God bless America. Okay, now we have 10B, which has presented our financial report for the month of February. Hey, Ann, thank you. And Lisa?
Good afternoon. Ann Wright, Finance Director. I have just a couple of slides I'd like to show you that highlight the information that's presented in the packet related to the February monthly financial report. That report is in the packet as green sheet 21-04-074. First, I'd like to start with a summary of the fund balance. This is a chart that appears in each of our monthly financial reports. It's a summary of our fund balance as of September 30. And this chart shows fund balance broken down based on governmental reporting standards. And it's done at the end of the year for categorizing our fund balance. So you see this every month, and it's still showing September 30, because that's the most recent month that that has been done and prepared for. This next chart is a chart that pulls from the previous chart, just the portion of fund balances referred to as unassigned fund balance. And the unassigned fund balance really represents the fund balance, which is available and not yet committed for other uses. So you can see that by fund. And some of the other uses that we've made commitments to have been to fund capital projects. And a lot of the special revenue funds have been basically committed through our capital projects fund. The next slide, Slide 5, is a history of the general fund, unassigned fund balance. It's a very interesting history, and you can see where we are as of September 30, 2020, at the $6.2 million, almost $6.3 million number. But you can see some history there. And next is the chart again that's in the monthly statements that shows the cash balances. And you'll see some large numbers, but keep in mind that we have a lot of commitments in our capital projects fund, and a lot of the different funds are committed to funding those capital projects, so that results in some large cash balances that are needed. So when those projects get underway and expenditures are incurred, we have the funding source. And the last two slides are bar graphs showing a comparison, February 28, 2021, to February 29, 29 days last year, 2020. And the revenues, you can see slightly ahead for taxes and state shared revenue. We'll mention that in the general fund for the FY '21 year, we did have a change in how we allocated communication services tax, and that helps bring that taxes number up. The incremental increase that occurred when those... That tax was increased in 2016 is now coming into the general fund, so that does help boost that revenue a little bit. And then the final slide is for expenditures for the general fund, and you see a large variance under transportation. And that's primarily due to the current fiscal year having the stormwater fund and drainage management costs that were previously recorded in our general fund under Public Works are now being reported in the stormwater fund. So it allowed that expenditure for transportation to drop somewhat there. that expenditure for transportation to drop somewhat there. And at this time, I believe that Lisa would like to talk a little bit about the budget process, the upcoming budget process.
Yes, tag team today. We did, we did want to let y'all know that finance is working under the direction of the city manager and with the assistance of the clerk to try to schedule our public hearings, and our budget meetings for this next fiscal year, we're so excited to kick that off, we're starting to build some numbers, and just so excited to get us going. I don't, Arlene, did you want to mention the two dates?
Yes, thank you, mayor and council, you'll be receiving a call from our city clerk to discuss our dates in September, we would ask that we move the September 15 council meeting, which is normally at 9:00 AM, to the evening, and then additionally, we'd be looking for September 29 to have our final budget hearing at 5:05 PM.
Yep, yes. As you all will recall, those two meetings that are public hearings are required to be after 5:01, 5:01 or later, or on a Saturday, so we have, we choose to do night meetings, and we do need to schedule them so they do not conflict with the Lee County meetings, as well as the school district meetings, which we've already populated that into these dates.
Uh... Are we ready?
I'm sorry, Arlene, what was the second date?
The September 29th.
Okay.
Wednesday.
At 5:05.
Correct, yes, and, and thank you, mayor and council, if you would just indulge me for one second, we just wanted to...
Your mic's not working.
If you indulge me for one second, we'd like to take this quick opportunity to thank Ann Wright for her six years of service to the city of Benita Springs. On behalf of the mayor...
If we could all come around by the podium for pictures.
On behalf of the mayor and council and your coworkers, we greatly appreciate all of your dedication to us, and we have a small, a small gift for you to thank you.
It's been a pleasure to serve as your Finance Director, and I'm really excited to have Lisa here, she did, she was great to follow from a standpoint of all the things that she put in place from the beginning of the incorporation of the city and until I came on board, so I really appreciate all that, and I would call her, and she always provided excellent guidance, so you're in excellent hands.
On behalf of the city of Benita Springs, we are pleased to present you with a certificate of appreciation for your six years of dedicated service to the citizens of Benita Springs, please enjoy your retirement.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Hey, Kayla.
Yep. Party. Oh, it's Sam's time.
Okay, let's go on to 11, mayor and council items, do they have any items from the city council?
Yes, thank you, mayor, that's Councilman Jesse Purdon's item, yes.
Yeah, we have... Fourth of July.
Oh, yeah, right.
Are you ready?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, the one green sheet I had this week was on Fourth of July, I won't read the whole thing, but I mean, I think you guys understand the spirit and the intent, we were the one beacon of freedom and celebration on Fourth of July last year in all of southwest Florida, it's my understanding that yesterday afternoon, Fort Myers approved live fireworks, so whether they did it or not, I was going to put in the green sheet, but I would very much appreciate your support on the idea that we need to just keep moving forward and get back to the way it was before, and the first step to that, I think, would be for us to approve conceptually the idea of going back to live fireworks, and then let Laura come back to us when she gets together the details, but I'm hopeful between us and Fort Myers, hopefully this will spread throughout southwest Florida, we can have a nice patriotic Fourth of July, so.
Could, could we also try to advance the possibility of a parade?
Sure.
I know we have to consult with the fire service because they were...
Wait, I've contacted, and we're waiting on their response, I told them we're ready to roll, but it's the union, I don't, they don't seem too enthusiastic, because I talked to the chief about two, three weeks ago, and he, and he said he was going to contact the union, I don't know.
Well, even if we can't, if that is the case, could we see if there'd be a different sponsor for a parade?
What we will do is we will reach back out to the fire department and discuss it with them, and then come back with some suggestions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Okay, now, uh...
Um, so do, I guess at this point, do we need to make this a motion to approve?
No, it's direction. I believe we have direction, but if you'd like it as a motion, we're...
I mean, I'm good with direction, as long as nobody has any objection, I think we've given them direction and we're good with that, so...
I think we're good, I think we're good.
How about a motion for real fireworks this year?
Okay.
Back to normal.
Okay.
How about back to normal?
I make that motion.
Let's get it back to normal.
Second, okay.
Okay, city attorney.
Oh, we have to vote now?
You have a motion and a second on the floor to have real fireworks, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Even in the rain. What happened?
Number 12, city attorneys report.
If you recall, my, I don't have anything to report, my only item, the settlement was moved to after the final public comment.
Unless...
Okay, city, city manager.
Mayor, excuse me, if we're, I have to leave at 3 o'clock, because if we could vote on that, the other things are not as substantive, because I have a doctor's appointment.
Okay.
No, no problem, if the council would like me to...
Make the motion to move that forward and vote on it all in favor, aye?
Aye.
So approved.
Okay, so the settlement agreement I have for you today is in the case of Walter McCarthy, James Janik, and those similar situated property owners, in the Bayside Improvement Community Development District, Bay Creek Community Development District versus city of Benita Springs, and if you, I have a court reporter here, we can go into executive session, but I have spoken with most of you and discussed this with you, the settlement agreement is pretty straightforward, what I'd like to do, if it's possible, is skip the executive session and just vote on the settlement agreement, the terms that are outlined before you, just to summarize, the CDD's position is that they already assess their property owners for stormwater conveyances and operations within the CDD's, and in particularly, these two CDD's discharge directly into either Spring Creek or Estero Bay, and so their objection is on the grounds that legally, a special assessment against them does not benefit their properties when they are taking care of their own, own stormwater. Now, conversely, the city's position on this is that what they, we do agree that when you are handling stormwater impoundments, that you are taking on some of that stormwater obligation for the city, and we have a credit program developed for that, and there have been some other CDD's and communities that have gone forward with that credit. The difference that where we really find with the two CDD's is that the water quality component of the stormwater is really the main focus for the city, and so while they may have their own ponds that were built many years ago and may not be up to standard, and if they discharge into even waters of the state, it is the city that is likely under the water permitting process to be required to take care of those discharges. And so what we've proposed is a settlement in which we will give them credit for the last two years that they have paid while this lawsuit has been pending, for the next two years. In those intervening two years, they will move forward with a monitoring plan, which will give the city data points to see whether or not their water quality has been, water quality obligations have been met, if they have, then they are in fact doing exactly as they said, that they are handling water quality on their own property. It is our estimation that that will not be sufficient, and so we have also implemented a capital improvement element, which will require them to adopt and move forward with making capital improvements on their own property to improve their existing stormwater systems so that the water quality goals of the city and the CDD's could be met. Now, this settlement will ultimately, we hope, will be a framework that can be used in other communities, some of the larger communities in this, in the city have a significant amount of land available for additional stormwater capacity, and it is much easier for us to work with them to develop projects on their own property than it is for the city to try and make offsite improvements to offset the water quality issues that may be existing in with the CDD's. So that is the proposal, it has the, the framework and the agreement that's before you has been vetted by myself, Matt Feeney, and the attorney for the CDD's, it is roughly final form, I would ask that if you are inclined to give approval, that you allow me to make any technical changes that may be required to finalize the agreement, and then Matt is here if you have any, any additional questions, but I think it is a good agreement, it basically puts the obligations of stormwater quality that the city would have on the CDD's as a co-partner in this, and it works more as a partnership agreement, and to the extent that they are living up to that agreement, they would be eligible to get credits against the stormwater utility.
Okay, thank you, attorney, I have a question, annual report, do they test water once a year, or do they just report once a year?
They'll report to us once a year, but they'll do testing throughout the year at any outfall.
Okay, well, I've, way back when Jay Aaron was mayor, we attempted a stormwater thing, and so much of the community, is a gated community that have developed their own stormwater, but that was years ago, and this protects the state water and the bay and the Estero River, whatever, Imperial, I think it's a good deal, I think we should pass it now and get it over with, and make a motion that we accept.
Okay, a motion and a second?
Any other? Roll call.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Thank you, I have nothing else. Thank you.
City managers' items.
Yes, thank you, I just have a few brief updates to give you all, I wanted to remind everyone that COVID vaccines are available, please dial 1-833-450-2032, or you can register at myvaccine FL.gov, Lee County has asked us to make sure everyone is aware they do have open appointments and that you're able to register, the location has moved to the former Sears building at the Edison Mall. Additionally, just wanted to touch base with you that yesterday, we sent out an email during the county commission meeting, county commissioners enacted an ordinance to ensure safety in medians and rights of way, I would like some direction from council on whether you would like to see something similar to that come forward to you at a future meeting, additionally, staff would coordinate that effort with the Lee County Sheriff's Office and the Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District.
I think we ought to be consistent with Lee County's law, so that officers are not confused as to where they are, so that's my opinion, and I think we should go forward with writing an ordinance for the city, because this is only pertains to the unincorporated areas of Lee County, right? Okay, thank you.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, we'll bring forward something to the next meeting.
Okay, very good.
That concludes my report.
Okay, council reports, any reports from our councilman Fred?
Yeah, I've got two or three items, number one, most of you may know this, some of you may not, that the Collier County Commission voted, I think it was unanimous, in fact, to ban through trucks on Logan Boulevard, subject to them being able to write up an enforceable ordinance. I did talk with Bert Saunders, who's the person that made the motion for this, and there's a lot of complaints coming from the residents on both sides of Logan about truck noise and speeding of trucks and things like that, so what I said was, once they passed it, then I would be willing to green sheet it and bring it forward so that we could consider that as well, because it wouldn't make a lot of sense to ban it for the 80% that Collier County has, and we would not do the 20% that we control, but it would make it, would make their enforceable ordinance almost unenforceable.
Fred, they would still be able to go down Benita Beach Road to I-75 if they're coming from Benita Mine, maybe?
Well, that would be the only way they could go, they'd have to go, well, depending on where their eventual destination, but yeah, right.
Okay, just Logan would be eliminated.
Just Logan would be eliminated, and obviously, if a truck had a destination that you would access off of Logan, which are a couple of communities, that truck would be allowed to go through there. They are working with the Collier County Sheriff's Department, and I think Captain Blake Lee from our sheriff's department is coordinating with them so that they try and get something that's enforceable, because if it's not enforceable, then it'll cause a lot more problems than it's working.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, on this topic, I actually had lunch with Captain, and they have real, real concerns with it, because we share the, we share the border with Collier County, a number of issues, number one, they can't pull anybody over without there being a secondary violation, so being that we're in a situation where we have limited police, as it is for Benita, he explained that we're going to be taking police off of Benita Beach Road or off, down by the, down by the water, or in Rosemary Park, and instead, going to be enforcing something that they generally aren't going to be able to pull people over for, and then if they do pull them over, all they're going to do is ask them if they're doing business in that corridor. Additionally, it is problematic for us from a traffic standpoint, because if all of those trucks aren't allowed on those roads, now all of the roads that we find to already be very busy and stressed are going to have all those big trucks on them, because they still have to operate, so just heads up, that's an issue, and I actually, I talked to Collier County Commission, a few of them, and I told them they should talk to CCSO, because LCSO does not think this is a good idea.
Well, as far as pulling the policemen from one section to another, I think the word would get out, would get out real quickly that they wouldn't do that, but your point about using other roads, that's why I'm saying, I asked, I get all, a bunch of emails from Logan, and the last one I answered, I said, well, where are these trucks coming from? Because I think they might be coming from Benita Mine and coming down, and then turning left and go down Logan, where they could turn right and get on 75, so that would, that could solve the problem, we'll, we'll, we'll keep working on it.
Mr. Mayor...
Plus, they should, Logan's supposed to build a wall, aren't they, a sound wall?
They were supposed to, but they'd rather just get rid of the trucks now, it's easier.
But I, I was going to email them and say, well, didn't they bring Phil Dirt in for your house?
Yeah. Good way to look at it.
Yes, sir.
Well, I also told Bert that I thought it was very important, because he's an attorney, that this be researched that is legal, that you can legally ban through trucks and all that, so I think that, and he was going to get with Derek to talk to him, and I think the firm of Gary Robinson's going to do some research on this to make sure that whatever they come up with is, would stand a court challenge, which it might be, and I'm aware of what Jesse talked about, because... And I'm aware of what Jesse talked about because I've talked to Blake Lee about the same thing. But if, but if they do it, I'll bring it to the council because it's the right thing to do. That doesn't mean you all will pass it, but at least it'll be brought in front of you to consider.
City attorney?
No, I was just going to say, I don't want to get an unfunded mandate. So I say let the Collier County Attorney's Office work up the ordinance first and I'll see if it's justifiable.
Yeah, well, you're partners with Bert Saunders, right?
I am, yeah.
Yeah, that's good. And Bert and I are good friends.
Yeah. So next thing I wanted to say was, and I'll green sheet this so that you get it well before the meeting that we have, our next meeting. But I did sit down and develop what is a vision I would have for Bamboo Village. And I talk about everything from parking to types of businesses that would be good, I think, in there and could be attracted versus businesses that I don't want in there. I will say this, the last thing that is on my priority list and my vision is residential condos or apartments. The most important is the commercial, possibly offices would be second. But if we have to give up residential on that site to get proper commercial development, I think that's worth it. But I would encourage everybody to think about writing up your own vision because I think one of the things we could do, once we have done this, is when we have people talking about making proposals, we could give them each council member's vision. They'll shuffle it together and they'll figure out what they can do and what they can't do. But I think that would be a good thing to, to occur. Okay, the, the last, last thing I wanted to report is that I was elected the president of Southwest Florida League of Cities Chapter.
Oh, nice. Congrats.
And it's really the, we, we really did a good job this last couple of years, even in spite of COVID. But we're going to try and take it up another level. And I'm going to look into possibilities of whether or not people that have retired out of being elected officials, if they want to be an unofficial member with no voting rights, that they could come to the meetings. The other thing that that did, because there's a board up at the Florida League of Cities that if you are a president of a chapter, you automatically basically become a board member of that board. So I'm now a board member of that board. The only difference is that if you're in an, in an area that's not served by a chapter, there they have what's called an at-large member. Or if you are a past president of the Florida League of Cities, as long as you're an elected official, you sit on that board. So that, wanted to report that and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, city manager, weren't you going to bring back some results of that workshop we had with Bamboo?
We are, we're going to have that at your next council meeting.
So we're going to have more input at the next council meeting. Yes, Mike, did you hear good? Chris? Lori?
I just want you all to know the Big Basin Bill died. It's not official yet. We'll get something official on it next week, but it, it died last week. Essentially, they had to make a deal with South Florida Water Management District. My understanding is they didn't have the governor's office. It was about money. The, the argument was they were going to lose $6.4 million to Everglades Restoration. I don't necessarily, they would have lost 1.6 because we would have been paying one of the less taxes, but the 4.6 they still would have got, it would have just been reallocated to where we live. So in my mind, they didn't lose it. It's reallocated. But to them, it was a loss, so it's dead for now.
We tried, we tried. I, I didn't think you could get any money out of Collier. Amy, please.
I, just a quick, I was invited to speak at Pelican's Nest about Bonita Springs and I, and I was very well received. I thanked them for their cordiality. And I just wanted to focus on a couple of things that they are most interested in. And one of them was, surprisingly enough, water quality, which is what we've talked a lot about today. And they also were interested in what was going on in the development in the former weeks at Raptor Bay. So those are, they asked a million questions about how we run and what we do. And, and it's interesting how, how much education our residents need about how Bonita Springs is, is run. And I do want to comment on, on the late entry in regard to the proclamation here. And of course, we all were in favor of the proclamation that has nothing to do with that, but it does reinforces the fact that I think we need as a, I would appreciate as a council that we get together and decide how we want to run our stuff. You know, and so we, we need to, if we can't have it in a workshop, then we should set aside half an hour to discuss various issues like, do we really subscribe to the fact that we're going to say no to anything that comes in at the last minute or not, unless it's a crisis? I mean, and, and that's just a very small thing, but all these things kind of work together to stir a lack of cohesiveness and understanding with the council. So I propose again that we do something about that by talking about our process and that we follow it when we can.
Thank you, Amy. I think rainy season may have started early and let's hope it's not raining. And, uh, public comment? Oh, minutes, I'm sorry. You have approval of minutes?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, any public comment? Come on, folks. We're all, we're all, we're all on the payroll. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, a motion to adjourn. I guess we're out of here.
Okay, and thank you for getting me out before my doctor's appointment.
Okay, yeah. We're done.